I call to order the regular meeting of the Lakewood City Council on July 14th at 7:08 PM. To connect with the council meeting online, please use the following links at LakewoodSpeaks.org or Lakewood.org/councilvideos. For online public comments, you may post comments of any link to LakewoodSpeaks.org, our online forum for public comments. We are leaving online public comments open during the council meeting and tomorrow through 10 a.m. Anyone who would like to address the city will be given the opportunity several times through the evening, two points in which for public comment on non-agenda items and then four agenda items as we move through those. Will the clerk please start us off this evening by calling the roll?
Mayor Strom.
Here.
Counselors LeBure.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Cruz Kay.
Here.
May Alguerrero.
Here.
Shar Azai.
Here.
Sinks.
Here.
Cruz Ai.
Present.
Lo.
Here.
Furman.
Here.
And Niceham.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. If you are able to stand, we would ask you now to please do so for the Pledge of Allegiance and once finished there, remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection.
(Inaudible) here to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All members of the city council have the responsibility to comply with the terms of Charter 7.2b and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial, or business interest. The city council is empowered by Charter 7.2b to agree by unanimous vote excluding the member at issue to excuse any member of the council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has a personal, financial, or business interest. Before we open our first non-agenda public comment period this evening, I would like to invite our police chief, Chief Smith, up to say a few words.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. I have a prepared statement here. I'm honored to be the chief police for Lakewood and I'm honored to be the police chief for our entire community. So, good evening, Mayor and city council. The Lakewood Police Department is dedicated to ensuring that an individual's identity is honored during an investigation. The announcement of a deceased person is one of our and one of the most difficult to share, as the public notice is often the first time those who knew and loved that person learn of their passing. In the public notice, the police department used both Jax's chosen name out of respect for her, but also included her legal name. The department did not intend to be disrespectful or cause harm by including her legal name in this public notice. We apologize for causing additional pain to the community and those who cherish her. We are committed to collaborating with members of this community to ensure that all individuals feel respected and valued, and we want to do better. Jax's friends and family have shared that she was a leader in recognizing and respecting the everyday needs and desires of others. We seek to honor that legacy by growing our understanding of how to better partner and serve all members of our community. The Lakewood Police Department is leading the investigation because Jax was found in Lakewood. The Denver Police Department, which received the initial missing persons report, continues to work with and support Lakewood in its efforts to resolve this case. We understand the interest in and the sensitivity surrounding the investigation of this death, of this beloved member of our community. But while this investigation remains active, the department is limited in the information that it can be made available for release to the public. Final thoughts. As we continue to grow as a public service organization, it's essential that we, the Lakewood Police Department, always reflect the values of respect, understanding, inclusivity in everything we do. Moving forward, I want to share that we will be assembling a team from within our organization whose mission will be to help all of us better understand and represent the voices and experiences of all members of the community we serve. We will focus on education, engagement, and building cultural competence to the end of building trust and ensuring every member of our community feels safe, seen, heard, and valued. This will all be in cooperation with the City of Lakewood City Manager's Office, and this will be our commitment to growth, personal and professional. It is our ongoing pledge to ensure we at the Lakewood Police Department uphold the highest standards of empathy, fairness, and service. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I will now open our first segment of non-agenda public comment this evening. I have three people signed up. My paper will cooperate with me. So, this is the first point in tonight's meeting where the public is invited to address the city council on items not on the agenda. This initial period of public comment allows for up to 10 speakers to provide comment on any matter other than an agenda item and will prioritize those with special needs. Speaking during this initial period of public comment does require signing up to speak with the city clerk in advance of tonight's meeting. There's no pooling of time during the initial public comment period. I would like to say, not loudly, but firmly, the goal of public comment is to create an environment that all stakeholders can share their thoughts and concerns. Whether your comments are left on LakewoodSpeaks.org or here in chambers, I ask that all comments be directed to the city council, that anyone in attendance respects the decorum of council chambers, and practice civility. So that every speaker may be heard, I also ask that everyone here in chambers refrain from audible applause or applause or audible support or discord with any speaker, so that everyone can be heard. For anyone who would like to leave a comment online, you may do so on LakewoodSpeaks.org, as I said, through 10 a.m. tomorrow. Couple notes that I would like to point out, no campaigning is allowed in public comment. If you have any handouts for city council as you approach, I'd ask that you hand them to the city clerk and he'll make sure to distribute those accordingly. The purpose of tonight is also for us to hear from you. This is a listening-only session. If you would like to engage in a conversation with your counselors, with staff, or myself, you may do so via phone, scheduled office visits, or via email. For those of you wishing to speak tonight, and I have lists up here already, and will have opportunities if you've not signed up yet and still would like to, once you arrive up here at the microphone, we'll just ask you to state your name and address, or your name and ward, and then from there you'll get three minutes to speak. So I will now get us started with the first three names signed up for our initial public comment period. And first I have Zee Williams, then Brad Bruce, then Alex Abreu. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Zee Williams. My pronouns are they/them. I'm a resident of Ward 2. I'm a transgender resident of Lakewood, a friend of Jax, and an advocate, and it's hurtful to me, honestly, that a police officer gets to speak before me, but I will accept it. Your organization cannot fix itself to the police of Lakewood. They cannot. He has left. He has left. And if you all are feeling uncomfortable, you should. You should feel uncomfortable, because the people who love Jax have felt uncomfortable since April 15th, when she disappeared. She disappeared from her home and she should be with us. I come to you with a clear ask from Jax and the people who loved her. Trans people represent a very small percent of our community. We are widely misunderstood, and the people of Lakewood, the police of Lakewood, have reflected that. Jax's mother and community have experienced things like the Lakewood police deadnaming Jax. That's not a mistake. That is violence. Deadnaming a trans person is violence. The mother had to beg for communication from the police. She has not even been granted the dignity of having an advocate, because she's not considered a victim yet. They stated that Jax was found in an alley. She was not found in an alley. She was found in a lightway, a space between two buildings that no public person can access. They stated she was found by a passerby. She was not found by a passerby. She was found by a property owner, inspecting property in a space that no person from the public could access. I was in possession of Jax's laptop computer for a week. We were begging the police to come and get it, because I don't want to be in possession of a piece of evidence in a death investigation. And we had to beg them, beg them to come and get it from us. They told us to just drop it off, drop it off over here at Allison Alamita, like it was nothing. Jax was found with all of her belongings missing, her shoes, her shirt, her glasses. Her shoes. We're made to believe that she scaled a 10-foot wall with none of those things. Was found in the back of this passageway by mistake. That she had consensual sex while the person she was with said she was taking GHB, a known date rape drug. And we are told to accept this narrative, and I will tell you why this matters. This is Jax's retten now. This is Jax, a person who woke up every day with the odds against her. And I know I'm going over my time, and I will continue to, because Jax doesn't have a voice, but I will be. Jax is here right now. This is Jax's voice, and I am sorry, Mayor.
If you have someone else that could finish for you, we can certainly accommodate.
I appreciate you, but I'm gonna finish. Jax is a trans woman in Lakewood, Colorado, who had no one looking out for her, and you all have to look out for her. Her life mattered. She woke up every day with the odds stacked against her. She woke up every day in a world that hated her and put on a fresh face of makeup and chose.
I'm asking you to please finish.
Excuse me, Mayor. I'm sorry. I'm taking this time.
If we continue.
That's fine. Recess the meeting. This is for Jax.
I'm asking for three minutes.
You can recess the meeting if you need to. This is for Jax.
I'm asking you to please yield. You're done with your time.
That's fine.
Happy to have you come back on the 28th.
You can recess the meeting, Mayor. I am finishing for Jax, and I'm asking especially my council members and people who want to hear me, to hear me. Jax is a woman who woke up with the odds against her, who never had a voice at this platform, because she was trans, and who chose to fight for people.
Okay, I'm going ahead and recess this meeting for 10 minutes. We'll come back at 7:30.
Trans people matter.
Okay, I will call the meeting back to order. It is 7:30 p.m., July 14th, 2025. And our next public comment speaker is Brad Bruce.
Sorry. Hi, my name is Brad Bruce. I live in Ward Two. First off, I just want to start off by saying, long live Jax. I'm horrified but not surprised that the Lakewood Police Department has seemingly botched this investigation so far. And I would also like to see an independent oversight task force to look into her death. I do not believe the Lakewood Police are capable of investigating themselves. What I am here to speak on is I am here to ask the Lakewood City Council to formally censure our congressional representative, Brittany Pedersen, for a vote that she made on a House resolution last month. On June 9th, Representative Pedersen voted with House Republicans to pass a messaging resolution, House Resolution 488. This resolution was a thinly veiled attempt to use the very real threat of antisemitism in this country to justify and show gratitude towards the Trump administration's horrifying immigration policy. I would like to read a few parts of this resolution verbatim. "The House of Representatives affirms that free and open communication between state and local law enforcement and their federal counterparts remains the bedrock of public safety and is necessary in preventing terrorist attacks." "And expresses gratitude to law enforcement officers, including U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement personnel, for protecting the homeland." "I believe that showing any sort of support to ICE at a time when they have already rounded up thousands of random people, including U.S. citizens, put them in detention camps without trial and/or simply deported them to countries unknown. But worse than that, encouraging state and local law enforcement to work with ICE goes directly against Colorado state law. It is illegal, and rightfully so, in Colorado for state or local officials to share information with ICE unless a federal warrant has been signed by a judge." Denver's Representative, Congresswoman Diana Deget, had this to say about House Resolution 488. Quote, "I could not support tonight's resolution that exploits this incident to demonize migrants, celebrate ICE, and ignore the real concerns of Jewish Americans. It is a shame that the Republican majority would politicize this attack. This moment deserves better than political point scoring," unquote. And since Resolution 488 was passed, Trump's big, beautiful budget bill has also passed. This new federal budget has increased ICE's budget to a whopping $150 billion between now and 2029. Tens of billions of dollars per year. Not only is ICE now the most well-funded federal law enforcement agency in the country, it is now the 16th most well-funded military anywhere on the planet. $45 billion of federal dollars have been specifically allocated to building new detention centers, and the ACLU has already found evidence that the Trump administration is planning to convert at least two private prison facilities here in Colorado into ICE detention facilities. Ten people have already died in ICE custody since January of this year. Countless families have been destroyed. Immigrants are not scary monsters. They are people just like you and me, trying to live the best, trying their best to live the American dream. In fact, I would bet every single person in this room has immigrant relatives who were at some point, or has people in their family tree who are at some point immigrants. America is a country built by immigrants for immigrants, and every single dollar spent on ICE is a dollar that is not used to make our lives better. I want better roads, schools, green spaces, public transportation, healthcare, after-school programs, housing, literally anything else that would make the lives better. It is disgusting that our elected Democratic leaders in Congress have done, in the face of this injustice, is to thank ICE for their work. Please consider censuring Brittany Pedersen. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Next, we have Alex Abreu. Try that again. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Alex Abreu. I stand in front of you today representing myself as Brother Ken Unity Keeper. Colorado's chapter of Sisters of Perpetual Indulgence is who I'm representing. I stand before you tonight as a community advocate, as a trans man, and someone who has made a commitment to care for my people. That encompasses the trans community, the queer community, and all of my neighbors in Colorado. I also stand here as someone who has felt called to be there for Jax Gretton and her family in every way possible that I could through this horrible loss. Jax was an incredible person. She was a force for trans liberation, a defender of those too often pushed into the margins. She brought people together through her kindness, her courage, and her conviction. But today, I am not just here to honor her legacy, I am here to demand justice. From the moment Jax was reported missing, her mother, her friends, and her community were forced into action to organize, to search, and to advocate when they should have been allowed to simply hope and grieve. Jax was not found because of law enforcement. She was found because of the relentless persistence of the people who loved her. She was found because of these people. And yet, the response from both, the Jefferson County Coroner and the Lakewood Police Department, has been riddled with harmful missteps that have deeply damaged any trust the community once had. We just had the chief come in here and be heard before her community and claim that they want to better understand and be there for her community and then leave before they could be heard. This is continued damage. Twice, they contacted the wrong person with sensitive information. They demanded Jax in a public post, they deadnamed Jax in a public post announcing that she was found. Their communication with the family has been brash, cold, and lacking basic compassion. And most critically, there has been a clear lack of urgency, diligence, and respect in pursuing leads and evidence that could help us understand what truly happened to her. We are deeply concerned that bias, prejudice, and transphobia have shaped and continue to shape this investigation. The facts we know and the person Jax was, the person Jax was, does not align with the assumptions that have been made. Something happened, and we deserve to know the truth. As someone who walks through this very world very much like Jax, only one month older, just as proud and just as vulnerable, I see her in me. And I see me in her. And that's why I opened my home to these strangers, so that we could organize searches. Why I stayed up late planning routes, why I answered every call from her mother, Sherilyn, even though it broke me. Why I cleaned her clothes and I packed her belongings with care so that I could send a piece of her home in a way that has dignity. Jax is a light, and she brought together some of the most incredible people I have ever met. And I will honor her by continuing to fight for her, for trans people everywhere, and for a world where no family has to beg for their child to be seen and treated with dignity. You owe this community a transparent, thorough, and compassionate process. One more line. You owe Jax the dignity that she has been denied, and we will not stop showing up until we get it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that includes, or that concludes our first segment of general public comment. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Counsel, do we have any items that we wish to pull from the consent agenda? Counselor Ken Cruz.
Yeah, I go ahead and motion to remove item 5A for discussion.
Okay. Any others? All right, will the city clerk please call the, or read the amended consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda is comprised of the following items. Item 5, Resolutions 5B-R2025-37, authorizing use of Lakewood's credits, plural, pursuant to Xcel Energy's franchise to bury electrical distribution lines for the 2951 South Wadsworth Project. 5C-R2025-38, appointing a member to the Lakewood Advisory Commission. 5D-R2025-39, appointing members to the Board of Appeals. 5E-R2025-40, appointing members to the Noxious Weed Local Advisory Board. Item 6, ordinances on first reading. 6A-O2025-22, authorizing a supplemental appropriation of $1,270,000 to the 2025 revised annual budget, including $870,000 to be appropriated from the Open Space Fund and $400,000 to be appropriated from the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, and authorizing the expenditure of these funds in performance of the improvements authorized by the 2023 IGA with Mile High Flood District regarding Dry Gulch and Two Creeks Park. 6B-O2025-23, declaring the intent of the City of Lakewood to acquire interest in property for public purposes for the construction of the North Dry Gulch Phase IV project and authorizing negotiations with property owners, acceptance of conveyance instruments, and condemnation of real property interests. 6C-O2025-24, prospectively accepting a deed from Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, DBA Mile High Flood District, to the City of Lakewood for 170 Yukon Street, City of Lakewood, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado. Item 7, minutes and additional items. 7A, approving city council minutes, regular council meeting May 28, 2025. Thanks.
Thank you. Before we open public comment, Ms. Duffy, I have you signed up for consent agenda. Was it about item, the item that got polled, 5A, RTD Bridge? Okay, we'll hold you till we get to that item. Anyone else wishing to speak on the consent agenda this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment on that. And may I have a motion, please?
Mayor Strom, I move for the approval of the city council minutes. Order all ordinances introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post with public hearing dates set for the date included in the ordinance. An adoption of resolutions, all of which are included in the consent agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second on floor, any discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and start our votes. Okay, perfect, thank you. Yep, that passes 11 yeses and zero noes. Will the clerk please read item 5A into the record?
Item 5A, R2025-36, a resolution authorizing intergovernmental agreement with the Regional Transportation District for design, construction, operations, and maintenance of lighting added to the W Line Bridge over West Sixth Ave, east of Union Boulevard.
Okay, thank you. And we will now open public comment on that item. Ms. Duffy, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I'm pleased that you have pulled that item from the consent agenda, and that's kind of what I wanted, was to hear some discussion about that. When the bridge lights went down many years ago, I was on the Lakewood Advisory Commission, and we were horrified. We loved those lights. So we formed a committee and we researched that, and we worked with RTD and we worked hard trying to get those lights back. And so I'm glad you're looking at this. I have to say, when we looked at this, it was, the bill was a lot less than what you're facing today. And I think we have a lot more financial issues. And you guys are privy to a lot more than I am, just what I read and can determine from the Lakewood budget, which is a monstrous document from an accountant's perspective. I love, I wrote a thesis when I was in college on the Lakewood budget. Yes, it was a boring document, but I got an A on it, so it's okay. But we're facing a lot. We're the city, financial considerations. And I hope you're really taking that into consideration in determining to put those lights back. We, the citizens, love them, and I think it does give a good view to Lakewood, although sometimes you're leaving Lakewood when you look at the lights. But we like it. I just hope you're looking at it from a fiscal perspective because it sure is a lot more than what we fought for to try and get those put back. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other community members I wish to speak to the bridge? Nope, okay. And with that, I will go ahead and ask for a motion.
Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2025-3, -36, I mean. Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the floor in a second. We'll go ahead and open council discussion, so please go ahead and put your hands up to speak. First, I have Mayor Pratam Shahrazai.
Yes, thank you. Really excited for this day. See some folks in here in the room that have been working on this for many years. And I want to just recognize all the work that went into getting us here today. And I really want to appreciate Ms. Duffy for giving that context, and I think that that really speaks to the long arc of this project. So I know we have some new members of council here, and I wanted to just give a little context on this. I've been advocating for this in response to hearing from multiple community members, many of which spoke up on Lakewood Speaks this afternoon. Three times, we voted to put this in the budget. So in 2023, we put it in the budget, and staff moved forward with negotiations with RTD. RTD. Then we approved it in the revised budget, had more discussion on it. It, it moved forward, and then staff moved forward with design work. And then we approved it in the 2024 budget, and the price has stayed at 818,000. What we're seeing today from staff is a 56% reduction from what was originally budgeted. That's tremendous. To me, this feels like a win. We're at the point now where we've seen a number of people speaking in public comment that they realize that people wanted this bridge. We just heard from a community member who recognizes that people want the bridge, and it took us up till this moment to get to this final stage. So to me, it is challenging to hear that after all of these budget approvals and all the work that went into getting us to this moment, which is the final thing to do to get the lights up, that there is questions on whether or not we should take this final step. So to me, it seems fiscally irresponsible to have already made all this investment. The other thing I would just highlight is, we keep talking about the cost of it. It's right now estimated at 365,000, and we know that that is 50% of which would be the Lakewood share. So this could be as little as 180,000. I'm glad that someone brought up the budget. This is a capital improvement project. It can only be spent, capital improvement budget can only be used for capital improvement projects. That fund balance last year was almost 18 million. To me, the last stretch of this long project at a 180,000 price tag is in response to what we saw from the comp plan for the second time over the last 25 years of comp plans. That place making is important to the community. And so I, I do want to just highlight that, and I, I want to appreciate all the work that went into that and all the advocacy for this. I think that there is a feeling you feel when you see the, this bridge, when you're coming down that mountain, or you're coming through Lakewood. People have spoke to that. I just want to make sure that people understand that this isn't underfunding something else. We're not taking from something else. In fact, we will have more dollars to put towards other capital improvement because of the great work that staff went into this by showing such a huge reduction in what we thought was the initial price and where we are today. So I don't really have a question in this. I just wanted to make sure that there was that clear context in that, so thanks.
Counselor Ken Cruz.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, you know, I pulled this tonight not because I, I oppose it, you know, I'm a strong believer in place making, um, you know, and, and for me, it's, it's because due diligence matters when we're spending tax dollars, and I just want to make sure we get it right. Um, I do want to give some gratitude to staff as well. First, you know, to, to thank you for responding to my questions in such a timely manner. You know, a lot of, of my concerns were associated with costs, maintenance, and long-term viability. Um, and the key takeaways, thanks to staff, was one, you know, the cost estimate and budget. The 365,000 was an estimate created back in October of 2024. For me, I just wanted to make sure that we look at that number again, simply due to tariffs and inflation. Uh, as we do know, we have some new tariffs potentially coming down the pipeline August 1st. I also wanted to just make sure when it comes down to maintenance by RTD, uh, you know, that there is full responsibility for maintenance and electricity. Um, and, you know, one thing I'm, I'm going to ask is, is to see just enforcement clause in this IGA, uh, just simply making sure that, you know, uh, RTD, we already know, is, is always at capacity at times. Um, I want to make sure that this is a priority and upkeep in the future, uh, is, is resourced appropriately. Um, and then just a few other additional things that I had questions for is just, um, clarifying whether council will review final bids or if this authorization concludes council's involvement to lead off my, my, a few questions.
Thank you, Counselor. So, pardon me, what you're doing tonight is approving the, um, you're approving the IGA, so actually, I'm going to ask our new Public Works Director, Maria DeAndrea, I believe she's behind me. I see a bunch of nods, that's good. So Maria, would you please come to the podium and answer some of these specific questions about the costs? Thank you.
Good evening. Yes, so the contract we, that is just an estimate, Counselor Cruz, and our intent after the IGA is signed is that we would release this for bids, we would get the bids back, and then we would know the actual cost breakdown. Um, so we are still finalizing the plans, we're very close, and so we anticipate that work, um, over the next several months, but this, uh, contract would not come back before you, the, or to award the contract. We would simply communicate that out of who that contractor was that was selected and a timeline for the construction.
Thank you for that. And, and when it comes down to, um, more specifically, you know, I see that the vendor that is being, being utilized is Insight Lighting. Uh, you know, just for context for community, they are Bi America Act compliant vendor, uh, so that did relieve some of the stresses I had in regards to tariffs. Has there been any consideration in regards to steel concrete that may also be impacted by tariffs?
We're going to need, um, some more time to look into that. So we do have a contingency amount in the overall estimate as well, so likely that will, um, account for some of those unknowns at this time.
And, and, you know, so I'm not hogging all the time here. You know, one of the, the last questions I have, is it, uh, possible for staff in the city to add an enforcement or accountability mechanism into the IGA just to protect our share of this investment?
I believe that's possible. We can certainly talk with RTD about that language. I think, um, they may be hesitant to do something like that because they would want to have their own priorities based on their available funding, but we can certainly bring it up with them and evaluate if we can add some sort of language to that effect, knowing the importance and the fact that the city is funding a good portion of the costs.
Thank you.
Would that be, I mean, if we vote on it tonight, how did, how does that happen? We're talking about changing a resolution that's an IGA. Would we not be voting on it tonight if that's what?
I'm not understanding your question.
He had asked to include in the IGA something that's a little bit more accountability for RTD to stand to that commitment of maintenance?
Good evening, everyone. Gus Gank on behalf of the city. Um, for those that don't know me, I'm in the city attorney's office. So what this item is, is the end result of a negotiation with RTD, and their expectation is that this will be the final version of this IGA. So if there's additional terms that you would like to see in it, we would have to go back to, to the drawing board, um, with them and negotiate, probably after you voted against approving this, um, because we have the final version of the IGA here. Uh, they may have already taken it to their board for approval, um, and so any additional terms would be, need, would need to be negotiated outside of this process, and then brought back before this council for their approval, of course.
Any other questions? I've got then Sofia, Mayor Guerrero, and then Counselor Sinks, and then Counselor Ryan.
Thank you so much. I will keep my comments extremely brief, but I just want to express enthusiastic support for this project. I was, um, working in environmental spaces as an organizer, I think the first time that I saw city council have a conversation about this bridge project. Um, and I do really think that the, the sense of, of identity and belonging that place making can do, especially when it is, um, somewhere essentially so powerful, so visible and so large, is really critical. Um, and just to, to draw attention to Counselor Sharazai's key points of this has to come from, that this is from our, that this is a capital improvement and that it is not a part of our general fund, and I think that the points that I have heard of any concern has essentially been eliminated by that point, um, on my end, I'm speaking with constituents. Um, and so I want to just double down and make sure that the community is extremely clear about where the dollars are coming from. And I'm really thrilled to see this project continue moving forward.
Counselor Sinks.
Thank you. So we're getting ready to go into budget season and budget talks, and, uh, so I'm, I'm calling back from my memory, and I also looked at the budget book this afternoon, and is it correct to say that we have three funds, the general fund, the capital improvements, and then the, um, open space fund? Is, is that correct? We have three, is that right?
We actually have many more than that.
Many more than that, okay.
But those are three big funds.
Big ones, the big ones, okay. So we're, we're not allowed, or, I don't, we don't typically take money from one fund and put it into another fund. Is, is that correct?
Um, often, our funds have restrictions around them. For example, open space, um, funds can only be used for things like parks and open space, as an example.
Right, great, thank you. So capital improvements, by the same token, can only be used for capital improvements.
That's accurate, yes.
Thank you. So, um, yeah, we have, frequently in community government, we have differences of opinion as we've seen on Lakewood Speaks. And who knows, you know, who knows how it shakes out, that, um, what percentage is for it, what percentage is against it, but I'm, I'm excited about this. And, um, in, in thinking about the differences of opinion, what I tried to do was think of the facts, and I know that, um, it's so easy to try to prove our points by insults or innuendos or whatever, we might read some of those on Lakewood Speaks. But I tried to get the facts that would like, okay, so where do I stand on this? What are, what are the facts? And, and the facts, as I noticed it, is that the, the money was allocated for this in 2023, before Tabor was voted on last year. So that innuendo can go by the wayside, let's hope. So it was already put in year, a year, at least a year ahead of time. And again, it was allocated in the capital improvement fund in 2023, again, a separate fund. So, um, that's another fact, that we're not taking money away from some, somewhere else that it could be used. It's been an aligned item for quite a while. And, um, another fact that makes me support this is that Lakewood doesn't have to put, put all the money out. We get to split it. So RTD will be held responsible for it too. And now I'll just put in my opinion, so in my opinion, that gives more bang for our buck because we're getting this beautiful place making and we're not then having to foot 100% of the bill. And then maybe one last opinion from me, and that is that, um, I believe that as we have a beautiful place making piece, it can contribute to the feel of a vibrant local economy and therefore attract some economic development. So I, I hope that's the case, and, um, I am excited about voting for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ryan, then Counselor Nystrom.
So I just want to pick up the point by Counselor Cruz K, uh, his point on the enforcement. So my questions are to legal, if I may. So as I understand, the agreement under section 5.1, the, the obligation of maintenance relies solely with RTD, is that correct?
There is a provision regarding emergency maintenance that it states if, if a party caused the need for emergency maintenance, they will carry the cost. Um, but other than that, yes, they do all routine and capital maintenance on it. RTD does.
And there's no out clause that I could see in this agreement that allows RTD, for example, to claim poverty, you know, that we, it's not in our budget this year for maintaining this, um, they would still have that obligation of maintenance, correct?
There is an appropriations clause that is found in virtually every one of these types of agreements, that the money would have to be appropriated for this. Um, so that could potentially cause an issue, but there's no other clause that specifically says if they don't want to do it, or if they have better, uh, items in the, in the budget that they wouldn't have to. But they do have to put, uh, the appropriation clause, and that's common and actually required in virtually every type of agreement like this for governmental entities under, uh, the state constitution in, in Tabor.
Okay. And, and absent that, the enforcement mechanism is frankly a breach of contract. If they breach this contract, the city can go to RTD, if necessary, go to the courts, but there is effectively, and if, a, a enforcement mechanism in this agreement, even though it doesn't lay it out in black and white, is that correct?
There is, yes.
Okay, no more, no further questions. Thank you for your help.
Counselor Nystrom, then Counselor Furman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, my concerns about this center more on the environmental concerns. Um, I think last year, when we were talking about this, I had asked if we could, um, power this through solar panels and was told that couldn't, that was not an option. I, I, the design very much concerns me. We are in a migratory bird corridor here in Lakewood, as many of you now know, um, and I would hope that we wouldn't do any further damage to that. We're talking about putting up floodlights which shine straight up into the sky, onto the light, onto the bridge, but beyond that. Um, and I just went to a presentation at CML about Dark Sky Colorado, Dark Sky International. They are trying to do the exact opposite of, of what's being proposed here, which is to, you know, you can go to Home Depot right now and buy an outdoor light fixture where the light only casts down for that purpose. They, you know, there's restrictions that, um, lighting, outside lighting be shut off by 10:00 PM. Um, there's a lot of factors that go into this, but I don't see anything of that nature in the design discussion or that we will have an opportunity to review the design, and that concerns me. Um, you know, it's, like, we have, we're losing billions of birds every year, um, and we have some very critically endangered migratory birds that come into Lakewood every year. Remains to be seen whether they will anymore, but this is going to definitely be detrimental. Um, you know, have you discussed with RTD or worked through what the time, timing sequence of this will be? When will the light go on? When, when will they be shut off? You know, there, there's a number of factors, um, that could be detrimental related to
I'm Ray Hill, City Engineer at Capital Projects and Utilities. Good evening. Related to the uplighting of this design, uh, much of that is related to the, um, cost effectiveness of putting this, uh, this establishment in, in four different locations on each corner of the bridge, and lighting under the bridge and also the, the trust structure above that. Uh, that, that is a solution that is going to be more reliable than placing these lights on the cables, which was, uh, the previous design, uh, which it wasn't, um, fully determined what the cause of that was, but some of that was thought to be, uh, grounding issues. Uh, so lighting the, the bridge from the structure itself also has issues, um, related to access and the ability to, um, to, to gain, uh, the access to that, uh, structure. It makes it more difficult overall.
Understood, but again, the, well, I guess, has there been a discussion about, I, I don't know where you are in the design phase of this, and it, it sounds like you pretty much have a, a solid design, um, but, you know, it, it is a bad idea to, to just project light up into the sky like that when, you know, one, one of the comments that they made in the presentation was 80% of people in the U.S. have never seen, um, the Milky Way, and that's because of lighting structures like this. That may not mean a lot to some people, but it is significant. There's a mental health aspect, there's an environmental aspect, there's a lot of that that goes into it. Um, you know, again, how long will the lights be on every night? There's a number of things like that that concern me, and have you finalized the design on this at this point?
Uh, the, the design of the, the, the light The design of the light structures are pretty well set, as far as the points where they would be most advantageous to light the structure itself. The operation of the lights, as far as when they would turn on and when they would turn off, would be negotiated with RTD, and they've continued to express that they would be willing to work with us on that, both the colors and any sort of operation. If it be that we would turn them off at a certain time of the night, that could be incorporated into the operations.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. I guess the other thing I want to call out is like, we're in Breckin Reg for CML. They have been working on Dark Sky Initiative for 15 years. They are now fully compliant. You know, that was one of the presentations that, you know, we heard at CML. I mean, beyond that, I also, I understand that this money was allocated, and, you know, we have a pool of money for capital investment projects. But I think there's more pressing matters. I mean, we all received an email last week from a gentleman who, every time there's any kind of a rain event, his streets flood, and it's because of poor design for stormwater. I know that's a concern for the new director. You know, there's, I mean, there's, in my ward, there's several places that have been waiting for sidewalks for decades. They don't have them yet. I just think there's better ways to spend this money than lighting the bridge. I appreciate the fact that it's sentimental to some people, and it is place making, but I think we have larger concerns. We have proposed zoning changes coming up, that if passed and implemented, there are neighborhoods in Lakewood that don't have sidewalks, or they have ditches on both sides of the road. I'm not quite sure how we're going to address that, but that is a concern, that it's going to cost a lot of money. And unless we're going to create metro districts in every area, that this becomes a factor, which will then make it more expensive for people to live in their homes, again, that's another place we're going to need to spend this money. So, you know, that are, those are my primary concerns with this, and I appreciate that there's a lot of work that's gone into this, but I don't think it's the right way to spend money at this point. Thank you.
Counselor Furman.
Well, many of the things I wanted to say have already been said. However, one thing I wanted to expand on was something that Counselor Stinks had mentioned, which is tying into the sort of attracting economic development. When I first was reading about this, I had recalled all the debates that occurred, even in Ward Four meetings, when the lights had first failed. And, you know, there certainly has always been people who didn't feel the money should be spent there, and there's people who clearly still feel that, and I can understand their position. It is often, I think, tempting to put ourselves into a place where we think about all the things we need to do, that I think are not just things we, you know, perhaps should do, but absolutely need to do. Things like the stormwater changes, I think that is entirely, you know, the concern about stormwater systems is obviously critical. And I don't think that, I don't think it's an either/or. It's obviously an and in that situation. But what I spent some time in the past week looking at was, and there, it's always loose, so I'm not going to claim that there's definitive numbers around it, but the reality is there's a lot of research out there that talks about economic development and the return on the investment in place making within cities. And I think it is absolutely worth considering the value we get. We are a city that is going to rely on business, like any other city. It's sales tax, right? I mean, so at the end of the day, attracting businesses to our city is going to be critically important. And so I think there is a return on this investment, albeit indirect, that has to do with creating a community people recognize and are able to identify beyond simply everything functions. We need to make sure everything functions. We also need to be a city that is identifiable, and so some element of place making is necessary. I think that, given the amount of investment previously towards this, it's obviously one that people value. So as challenging as it is to spend money on things like this, I think it's worthwhile, and I support it. Thank you.
Counselor Labure, and then Counselor Lowe.
Sure, thanks, Mayor. You know, everybody's made a lot of excellent points. I agree with everybody. You know, I agree, I like place making. It's an important function for any city, for any community. The work we've done on Alameda over the years is a great example, I think. It's fantastic, the way it looks with the lighting and the signage. I would also say I love the old LED lights on the bridge, and wish we could just flip a switch and make it turn back on. And I think it's also worth mentioning that, you know, in the grand scheme of things, relative to the budget, and a lot of costs associated with running a city, this is a low amount of money. I mean, in retrospect. I want to preference that relative. So I know it, maybe I shouldn't say that, but it's relatively low. But, you know, I also think it's worth just mentioning that counsel, you know, we should be in the business of making tough choices. I think there are a lot of competing priorities always on a council. Obviously, you know, Counselor Nystrom and I had a lot of things to say about sidewalks last year, and bike lanes, and I still think those are huge priorities that are in our capital improvement budget, that also have a lot of tertiary impacts beyond just helping potentially ease traffic, but also with reducing emissions and all sorts of other sort of great impacts of increasing funding in those kind of broader infrastructure projects. And I'll also say, you know, I don't know how we all really come up with our prioritization of capital improvement projects. You know, I don't know really what that process looks like. I know some communities have advisory commissions and, you know, with citizens on them that look into prioritization, and maybe that's something we should be thinking about in the city. But I'm not really in a great position to say if this is, you know, the best project relative to all the other competing interests in the capital improvement budget, but I just wanted to just point that out. I think, I think there will be great impacts whether this project is completed, or whether these funds went to another project in the capital improvement budget. I think these are all essential priorities. And so that leaves me in a tough position of not knowing where I really stand on it, but just wanted to make those comments, and appreciate everybody indulging me. Thanks.
Counselor Lowe.
Thank you. Just wanted to very brief questions. I appreciate the amount of diligence that my co-counselor has done on this. He's been very thoughtful about the questions he asked. On the sort of the concern about, well, as materials costs go up, could the cost potentially go up? And there was this discussion about can we see the contract later, and the answer was sort of probably not. I do want to call out Section 2 of the resolution, which says the city's chief financial officer is hereby authorized and directed to pay amounts not exceeding $500,000. So just for clarity, I mean, my assumption is any contract that required us to pay more than that, we would, at that point, you would have to come back to counsel for an amendment to this resolution or new authorization, right?
Yes, that's accurate, Counselor.
Great. And if I understood the exchange, I mean, it's, so that's the worst case scenario. It sounds like there's a chance that we could, we could end up paying less if the costs are less than that. That's sort of our maximum.
Right.
Okay, great. So I think that that provision, I think, should give us some assurance about sort of capping our, you know, sort of maximum downside risk here. I think that that section is thoughtfully structured. I want to recognize like the legitimacy of the point Counselor Nystrom is making, like that is a very real concern, this question of sort of light pollution. My better half at home, who, I care a great deal about the birds, I think it's safe to say he cares more about them. He asked me about exactly this thing. I guess I would just say, Counselor Nystrom, rather than sort of at the end of a very long stakeholding process, I just don't think it's realistic to try to sort of rejigger the design at this stage. What I would be open to, and I think what would be productive, is a discussion, I can think of any number of ways to have this, maybe referring this to LAC, for us to look at some sort of ordinance that looking forward, you know, working with stakeholding this little bit more, talking to city staff about this, but some sort of policy change that would, going forward, allow us to take a deeper look at how we're lighting infrastructure and public spaces. I think it's a very legitimate point. I just feel like we don't want to come in retroactively, and it just feels like not the, we want to do this in an intentional sort of proactive way moving forward. And so I kind of think at this point, tempted to make some sort of joke about, you know, we've been trying to, that it's a bridge that we, that we haven't crossed, and now we're finally crossing it, or something like that. But here we are, I think tonight is the night to approve this project. I think it's worth looking for, looking at this going forward. But for tonight, given all the reasons that have already been articulated, I plan to vote yes on this item.
Counselor Ken Cruz.
Well, thank you. You know, it was a great hearing from my co-counselors, as well as from staff. Like I said, one of the biggest reasons I wanted to bring this up, you know, I do see this as a project, as a continuation, and as, you know, an investment that we've already, you know, spent money and time into. You know, I think whether or not someone is excited about this, I think we would all agree that, you know, when it comes down to protecting an existing investment, just making sure it's, you know, has fiscal sense, and we have accountability and oversight to ensure it's maintained. So I just want to, you know, confirm again, for any reason, RTD, you know, the last situation, lighting wasn't working, then we saw no more lights, and there was, we are where we are. You know, it's just, in this case, in this situation, there are circumstances that would then be a breach of contract, at which point the city can move forward. What does that look like for our investment, since we don't own it? You know, just want to make sure, just that that's very clear of that ask. What does that look like?
There is an escalating dispute resolution clause that we would go through first, where it goes through sort of a manager level, and then it finally goes to one of the heads of RTD, and to our city manager, Ms. Hodson here. And if we were not able to reach a resolution on something there, then we would go through the court process.
Okay, yes. I appreciate it. Like I said, you know, I'm no bad hope that RTD is just as excited about this, but just protecting our investments as a city. So thank you.
Counselor Isabel Cruz.
Thank you. I was going to leave it, but since everybody's spoken, and I did just want to say I'm excited to support this project. I think in the scheme of how we spend our capital investment dollars, particularly when we think about what we're projecting the actual cost of this to be, and Lakewood share of it, is not something that's going to build very much sidewalk, unfortunately, or very much of a lot of other things. And so I think that this is a very targeted investment, that I hope will bring pride to our city, and hope will bring the aspects that are maybe hard to quantify, but curious about the studies that Counselor Furman was referring to. I would love to read those, because that is an important aspect of this in our community, that relation to economic development. I also just wanted to say that I thought that Counselor Lowe's suggestion regarding future work on how we can limit light pollution, whether that's an LAC request or otherwise, in particularly our municipal investments, I think was a wise one, and just wanted to signal my openness to you and to Counselor Nystrom on having that conversation moving forward.
All right. Thank you, everybody. And before we cast a vote, I too want to express some very significant excitement. I've been part of that council that has, but has voted for it several times now, and never this concretely, right? It was within the scope of a very large book, but it did come with conversations around it. And to all the points that many of my co-counselors have made, you know, whether it be economic development, or place making, or restoring something that we know that the community held very dear, that wanted to have back, a number of reasons. For me also, fiscal conservatism, doing the right thing with the dollar, we'll say that, was very important. So I appreciate Legal's perspective on the breach of contract process. That was my biggest concern with that. But I know that there have been lots and lots of hours put in from our Public Works Department for years on this, so a big gratitude to staff for all the work that you guys have done, and within our finance department, having sequestered those funds early on, set them aside in savings. If only all of us could do just as well in our accounts as you guys do and yours, we might have more rainy day funds. But you guys have done a really great job, and we're saving money from the initial expectation of this cost. So thank you very much for all of that. And with that, I have no more hands up, so we'll go ahead and please cast your vote. Counselor Matt Guerrero. Okay, thank you. All right, that passes nine yeses and two noes, the noes being Labure and Nystrom. Okay, moving on, will the clerk please read Item 9 into the record?
Item 9, ordinances on second reading, 980-2025-19, accepting an application to adjust the operational service area of the City of Lakewood Water Utility to include and extend water service to property located at 5490 West 13th Avenue.
Thank you. And I have no one signed up for public comment on this item. May I please have a motion?
May I move for the adoption of Ordinance O-2025-19 on second and final reading?
Second.
And when I accidentally cut myself out there, I was saying we had no one signed up for public comments, so we don't have any public comments here. Oh, one thing I forgot to mention, we do have, we accept public comments on LakewoodSpeaks.org. There were a number of comments on a number of the topics that we're talking about tonight, so feel free if you want to check out any of those. Those are available for your viewing as well. With that, counsel, do we have any questions before we move forward with a vote? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and please cast your votes. We have two yeses online. All right, that passes 11 yeses and zero noes. Will the clerk please read 9B into the record?
9B, second reading and public hearing on O-2025-20, authorizing execution of a permanent utility easement across city park property at 2951 South Wasworth Boulevard, Lakewood, Colorado, to Public Service Company of Colorado for an underground electrical vault and related facilities.
And again, I have no one signed up for public comment on this item. May I please have a motion?
I move for the adoption of Ordinance O-2025-20 on second and final reading?
Second.
Counsel, any questions or thoughts before we vote? All right, seeing none, please cast your votes. Can someone vote for Counselor Matt Guerrero? All right, that passes 11 yeses and zero noes. Will the clerk please read 9C into the record?
9C, second reading and public hearing on O-2025-21, authorizing execution of a permanent utility easement across city park property at 9351 West Joel Avenue, Lakewood, Colorado, to Public Service Company of Colorado for electrical service and related facilities.
Thank you. And another topic I do not have any public comments signed up for, may I please have a motion?
I move for the adoption of Ordinance O-2025-21 on second and final reading?
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, and the second. Is there any council discussion or questions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead, please cast your votes. All right. That passes 11 yeses and zero noes. That was a lot of really exciting stuff right there. Thank you, everybody. Now we move on to our second point of general public comment this evening, which I again do not have anyone signed up to speak on general public comment for residents that are here. Does anybody want to join us for general public comment this evening? Nope, okay. All right, well, we will then move forward to general business, and with general business, we have a counselor, we've got two counselor requests. And with general business, we have a counselor, we've got two counselor requests that we'll discuss this evening. The first one comes from Counselor Sinks. Counselor Sinks, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you. So I love pickleball. I play pickleball. I played pickleball at Whitlock Outdoor Courts and someone complained about the noise and they probably lived about 250 feet away from the pickleball courts in, in an apartment. And so then the city closed Whitlock Pickleball Courts. So pickleball is a really popular sport, growing, growing, growing. And I've been receiving emails from some neighbors that have a new neighbor coming in who will want to build a pickleball court, lots less than 250 feet away from their bedroom windows or whatever they've reported. So if the city knows that it's important to close public pickleball courts, then we need to also think about what to do with private pickleball courts. But oh, there's quite the rub there, you know, on the legality of what, what we can do on private, what we can legislate on private property. So then, as I explored lots of different options, I appreciated the advice from the mayor that said, what are other cities doing? And that's where LAC shines, the Lakewood Advisory Commission shines. And I would like then for counsel to vote that the LAC studies what other cities have done in the midst of private pickleball courts. And of course, a noise ordinance is so closely connected with this because the impact of the ball on the paddles makes a, a high decibel sound for, for that impact time. And so I'm just requesting counsel to approve this request that LAC study what other cities have done with private, with pickleball courts on private property. It's, there's some things out there, what cities have done on parks, and that's what was looked at previously when Whitlock was closed, that other cities have established, you know, a 350 or whatever. But this is a whole new ballgame here, private pickleball courts. And so it is a difficult situation because, wow, who wants to live next to, you know, people playing pickleball all hours? And so what, what are some regulations? What can we do? And so I hope that the council would support this request. And I, I know that LAC is really always very happy to receive projects from us. And so thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your submission. Counsel, do we have a second for that?
Second.
Was that Counselor Labure? Okay, Counselor Labure, second. And with that, then we'll go ahead and open it up to questions and conversation. First I have Counselor Matt Guerrero and then Counselor Labure, then Counselor Isabel Cruz.
I am okay with this. Of course, it's not particularly controversial, but I will say that Ward Two also had, I think, a single complaint, shut down our pickle, our public pickleball courts. And I received several dozen comments from people who said that they were upset about them closing and that did not reopen them. And so I would, if, if Counselor Sinks is amenable, I would broaden this slightly from the LAC and say, and what can we do to keep our public pickleball courts open and, and have more of these types of activities accessible? I think where the north part of Lakewood is already, less so now than a few years ago, but still has like less parks per person and like less of these public amenities, less new public amenities, and those pickleball courts were really important to a lot of...
Counselor Matt Guerrero, looks like we lost maybe your signal.
And I think it was very, it was very disappointing for the community. And so I think if, if we're going to be looking in how we can regulate private ones, I would also actually like to look into how our other cities allow like for public pickleball because the world where this somehow becomes like an elite game that is only accessible if you live in a building or part of a club that has it versus also being public, given that it's as cheap to do as tennis is, as, as an individual doesn't, I, I would just like those things to be able to go together so we can think about recreation access and amenity from kind of both perspectives.
Counselor Sinks.
Yeah, thank you for that. And that certainly is an important point. However, I would like to keep the narrow focus on this request, that it only apply to the pickleball courts on private property. There is a bit of a time issue that the neighbors feel on this. And I also think that something should come next, which would be, again, LAC presented to us something about noise pollution. And I think what you're requesting could fit into that. And we need to revisit noise pollution too. But for the purposes of this request, again, just on private property, thanks.
Counselor Labure.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to comment that as a fairly active tennis player, I think regulating pickleball is a great idea to limit it. The other thing, I just wanted to point out that Centennial's done a lot of great work in this area. They have a very robust law on commercial backyard and HOA pickleball courts. So I think there'll be plenty of things for the LRA to chew on and just happy to support you. So, LAC, excuse me. So just wanted to let you know. Looking forward to learning more about this.
Counselor Isabel Cruz.
Thank you. And I can maybe guess what you're going to say to this based on your response to Counselor Matt Guerrero. But to me, the issue that I'm seeing in what you've brought up in the responses, is sure, how do we deal with private pickleball courts and noise? But to me, the fact that we don't have tools to regulate private amenities in people's backyards that have significant impacts on their neighbors and also could have significant environmental impact in the way the land is used, like feels really off base to me, that there's no permitting process to put a pickleball court, but I have to get a permit to put a fence in my house. Like, it feels a little misaligned to me. And so potentially, it could be a future request or further, but I think we're always going to find ourselves regulating the hot sport and there's going to be a new hot sport. And so how can we stave off issues further down the line by thinking more deeply about what our, our regulation of the permitting process is? Is a hopefully friendly suggestion, if not for this, then for the future.
Do you want to respond?
Yes, your, your point is well taken. One thought initially was, should we go zoning route and maybe use table? And, and our response was, things that are permitted are in the zoning, and so that's what you brought up. You know, maybe, I like that analogy. If fences are, require a permit, then yes, so should permanent structures, et cetera. But yes, as you foresaw, I would like to keep this just very narrow and pointed for the nature of the timing of it. And yes, let's consider that in the future. And by the way, one thing was like, well, wow, how, how about bouncing a basketball? You know, that's noisy, but I think it's really a decibel study, you know, because bouncing a basketball and hitting, hitting a backboard and maybe if it has a chain, you know, on the net, that could be noisy, but the decibels wouldn't be the same as the impact of a ball. And so, and, and then by the way, did you know that there's felt paddles for pickleball? And there's balls that don't make the noise? And so I wonder in the LAC study if they can also compare decibel levels of those things and, you know, all of that, there's, there's a lot. So let's just keep it to this, I would like to keep it just to this narrow focus. Thank you.
Counselor Nystrom.
Thank you. I guess from a narrow focus, I would, I agree with Counselor I Cruz in terms of investigating the permitting. I also appreciate Counselor Labure's comments about HOAs and benchmarking because there is a resident in Ward Five that has been dealing with a tennis court that was converted to pickleball courts. And for several years now, she has had constant noise outside of her house, all hours of the day and night. There's nothing she can do about it. Her HOA board, all plays pickleball. So, and this is right behind her house. So her neighbor moved. She said, I can't afford to do that. So I do think there's, and I'm not saying that we're going to be able to go in and change the HOA board necessarily, but I think that benchmarking information would be very helpful in that instance. And, you know, I'd be interested in seeing what comes out of that.
Counselor Ryan. And for anyone that has not had their hand up yet, this is last call for hands.
So I was hoping staff could help me with providing a little bit more context, for example. If, if I want to add some impermeable surface to I, of some size, I assume I have to get some permission from the city?
I don't feel comfortable answering that without knowing specifically, so sorry.
So, so the example here would be a pickleball court, right? If I, if I have a lawn and I want to pave over part of the lawn and make a pickleball court, I'm assuming if I'm starting to dig and put concrete or some impermeable surface down, I'm going to need some permission from the city? You don't?
I don't know that we can answer that on a broad scale, but staff did respond to this specific question from Councilmember Sinks, and no permit is required for a pickleball court. So I think that would infer that, no, you do not.
Okay. And would it be permissible for the city to have one set of standards for how it treats its own public pickleball courts, for example, and have a completely different standard in terms of decibel levels and distances and all that for private, for those that might reside on private property?
I think it's conceivable, yes. What, what I can offer is the city has done a, actually a lot of work during the process of this dilemma at the Whitlock Center. And I happen to have some notes as it relates to a study that was done, a noise impact study. And it's just, it's frankly just a really tough issue. As Counselor Labure mentioned, Centennial has taken this on just in, in a real forceful way. And I actually was at CML last year and heard a presentation on that. There are also other communities. Denver has some regulations as well as some other cities outside of Colorado. So we're more than happy to share this information. It's really, it's a relatively new sport. And as we're seeing these new courts, we're all kind of learning together. So we're more than happy to share this information and to try to figure out the best way to address this issue in our city, both private and public, so for what that's worth.
I, I also had the good fortune of attending that CML session, not this year, but the year before, up in Loveland. And I, I wonder if this should be a little bit broader, besides just gathering information about what other cities are doing. I feel like that's already been done. For example, if we went to Centennial, they'll tell us all the different cities that they looked at, they'll tell us the, the study that they did, they spent a lot of money on, on their study to come up with the decibel levels. They explained that, yes, it is a little bit different, the, the ping and the pong of a tennis ball is a lot different from, from pickleball and, and all the reasons on that. And so I'm not sure if we just, if we have it so narrow as to just tell us what other cities are doing, I'm not sure that that would be enough. And so I would, I would be curious if you have some thoughts as to how we might expand that. I also do have some concerns that if we have those two different standards, one for how the city addresses its, its pickleball courts and another for how we address how private property owners have, deal with that, that could be a little bit dicey. And then going to Counselor Cruz's eyes comment about, this is the hottest thing now, but is there going to be something else? Do we want to create something that is so narrow as to just deal with pickleball? Or do we want to capture other activities that might, might be in there? And so that gets back to the noise, noise ordinance that I know there's already some undertaking. I'm fully willing to move this forward if you say that, no, I don't want to do anything else other than that. I'm just very concerned that I'm not sure the value of having the LAC just come back with some other cities when we already know that. It sounds like staff already has a lot of that information. And I know I heard a lot of it just in listening to a presentation at CML last year.
Yeah, thank you for that. So what, what I don't know is how Centennial applies it to private property and how the, how that study, which I'm not sure, I've seen one, I'm not sure if it's the same study or not. The former Community Resources Director, Kit Newland, sent that out back when we were talking about Whitlock. But, so can you refer, is there anything in that study that you can point to for private property? Of course, decibels are decibels no matter where they are, but any, anything specific that you could add, shed light to on pickleball courts on private property? I'd have to really look through this again. So in Centennial, they have permanent outdoor pickleball courts that are regulated, temporary outdoor pickleball, pickleball courts, and then limited exception for pre-existing permanent outdoor pickleball courts. So they're trying to manage it all. And it, it also needs to be said that this is, this was met with some controversy even at the CML session that we went to. There were people who had some reactions to the way that these were being regulated. So this is a surprisingly very touchy topic, just to, just to be clear. Denver does some regulation and why don't I share this with everyone? So at least we all have the same level of, of understanding. And also, we would certainly share this with the LAC and probably want to have numerous conversations, if indeed this goes to the LAC, to make sure we're getting as thorough, thorough information as we can together. Thank you. So Counselor Ryan, thank you for your suggestion to possibly broaden it. And I think it is pretty broad. What are other cities doing for private property? Are they issuing permits for impermeable surfaces? Are they, you know, requiring, I think there's a lot that can be explored. And, and again, I don't know that many studies that I've seen address it on private property. So, so I would just like, so what are they doing? Are they making a permit? Are they requiring a permit? That's, that's what I wonder as well. So it's not just decibel levels, which would apply to whatever, public parks... whatever, public parks or private property. So, I can't think of how to broaden it because I think it already is pretty broad on how other cities are planning for this. Do you have ideas on how to broaden it?
Sure.
I haven't given it much thought, but at the very least, I would ask that the LAC come back with their recommendations as to which ones they would like to see and the basis, why they reached those conclusions, that at the very least would help us with some of that rather than just giving us a bunch of raw data that we may already have. So.
Great, thank you. I really like that. I was thinking more just the study thing and then, yes. So, I would like to add that they include some recommendations on things that they've seen that other cities do concerning private property and pickleball courts. I would also like to add a time factor. And either the research is out there or it's not, and so, I would like to go, I don't know what anyone might feel that an appropriate time factor would be, whether it be one or two months. I know the neighbors feel a very urgent sense to keep things moving very fast from on our end, so.
I appreciate that. It'd be nice to have a quick turnaround, but just the nature of the LAC and when they meet, right? They meet essentially once a month. So, this has to, we approve this, it has to get to the LAC, someone has to look at it, they have to organize as to what they're going to do, and for them to turn around essentially in one meeting, at least from my six years of experience, that would be unheard of.
So, you're saying two months would be unheard of?
I think it would be, I think it would be a challenge. I'm not saying they couldn't do it. I'm just saying, given the nature of when they meet, once a month, it would be a challenge, I think, for them to gather the data, review it, write up a report, and come back to us. So, I mean, we could certainly say we would like it as soon as possible, and whatever that means for the LAC. But, you know, if we need something faster, then perhaps we should be thinking of a different board or commission to provide us that information, but I think that's a heavy lift. So, my suggestion would be as soon as possible.
Is there another board or commission or another way to gather information and make a decision on this that you can see? Asking me?
Yes, please.
I would say it would be CR staff, Community Resources Staff. There isn't really another board or commission that's designated to do this kind of work. You know, I'm just thinking, I have a personal friend who lives in Arvada who built a pickleball court, and I can certainly ask my peers of other cities, and it's a pretty anecdotal, or just here, what, how and if they have regulations as relates to private property. So, if that's helpful, I'm happy to do that before two months' time.
Good. Okay, we've got a few other hands up. We do Mayor Protam Sharazai, then Counselor Maia Guerrero, then Counselor Isabel Cruz.
Yes, thank you. I wonder, Counselor Sinks, if you would be open, given the timeline that we are hearing from the community members that this is a pressing matter, if we could just as a body start to share resources with you, perhaps the next step is you, as a council action, similar to what we did tonight, you come with a more defined, like, where you think we should go, but we would be willing to share those resources to help you develop that. But I think the timeline for LAC makes it, we're going to be into it. And I just pulled up the agenda, through September, it's tight. So, I think some of that work may need to just happen offline. Would you be open to us sending you some of that information to help start that?
I would be very open to have our city manager talk to peers and any community resource staff evaluate what they see and any of my peers coming to me with something because, I mean, this, we need to settle this. It's a growing problem, as we heard in Ward Five from Counselor Neistrom. And so, yes, I can rescind my thought that the LAC would do it, but, and I can come back, you know, in another, I can come back again with another proposal after hearing some data and hearing thoughts. So, thank you all.
Ms. Hudson, I have a couple questions about Counselor Sinks' potential shift in her, oops. I'm sorry, I don't know how long that happened. A couple of questions about Counselor Sinks and her potential shift in the request. Is it Community Resources Staff responsibility, though, to do research on private property?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking about in my mind. That really isn't something that Community Resources does. They manage the public parks and spaces for the city, so they're all about the public resources. So, it's really this public-private issue that just kind of is getting tangled together.
And if it was a staff thing, I think we need to be candid with the amount of work that everybody's doing right now, would that even speed up the process faster than the LAC?
Right, that's a good question. We're in the middle of the budget process, so that's really all hands on deck. In fact, we've canceled our leadership team meeting scheduled, it's a monthly scheduled for tomorrow because everyone's working on the budget. So, it wouldn't be, I'm a little hesitant to send this to staff during this time. This is really the busy time, and we're in the middle of the summer. So, we have, our pools are open and lots of activities, our camps are going strong. So, really, it's a busy time for Community Resources.
Okay, we've got a couple of other hands up, and then Counselor Sinks will wrap us up. Counselor Maia Guerrero.
Yes, I definitely recognize the intensity that you are hearing from your constituents on this. I just want to signal that I'm mostly opposed to this as a notion. I think that if there ends up being regulations that are part of other recreation-type codes in terms of decibels or barriers from streets or what have you, I'm definitely open to that. But quick research shows that, yes, if you're 100 feet from a pickleball court, it can be quite loud about what a freeway can be, but even at 200 feet, it's already only about what a loud conversation is. And so, given that my board is experiencing having their amenities taken that are public, it just feels like unless we're going to kind of look at the solutions and additions and that we're not going to be really clear, that what we're hoping to do is allow for pickleball publicly and privately, but with maybe some modifications, unless we're sort of willing to be clear about that intention, I'm just, I'm not really supportive of the capacity from LAC or staff, just to put it out there. Since I'm not in the room, I know I can't do my normal, like, head nod or head shake or squinting at people across the bench, so I wanted it to be really explicit.
Thank you. Counselor Isabel Cruz.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm struggling with, as we've had this conversation, if this request is going to yield the results that you're hoping for with regard to timeline. I'm seeing, I think, like, maybe some of the resources folks have been talking about, at least from my read, and I just did it up here, like, do seem to deal with private property, but I also hear what Counselor Maia Guerrero was saying around, I think that there is some level of slippery slope-ness of dealing with these things in, like, such targeted ways. So, I think I would probably be most supportive of between now and before we start getting into, like, huge budget season or whatever, if you all are trying to deal with a pressing problem, like, if you were to come with a recommendation, happy to, like, debate and discuss that and help you with it. But, yeah, I'm feeling a little bit torn on whether this is going to yield the results that you're hoping for, unfortunately.
Go ahead. Anyone else? Counselor Lowe.
I'm just going to throw a quick idea, only in an effort to be helpful and help try to land this plane, just if it's useful. As many of you on council know, I think I have been lucky and grateful to benefit from a really brilliant undergraduate intern who happens to be with us in the audience tonight, who has done some great policy work, and she has indicated to me that she would be willing to help you, Counselor Sinks, just look at a couple of other cities and some other, pull together some initial research to support a follow-on request, if you wanted to do that. So, I'll offer, if you're looking to do something, she's only available for a few more weeks, but if you're looking to do something quickly, she'd be happy to look into this and sort of assess what other cities do on this topic, if that would be useful to you.
Floor is yours.
Pardon?
Floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, thank you. I think it would. It would be quicker than LAC, and we can certainly meet about that. And, yeah, again, what I want to find out, do other cities require permits? Do other cities allow it? Do other cities have certain restrictions for times? So, I think we can yield a lot of answers. I think you can help out a lot, and thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor Lowe, for offering that, and thank you all for your ideas. And we will, I'm sure, be back once we know which direction, you know, this research is going to help us know which direction to take this and to have a little bit of facts and knowing this is what others have done, and so therefore, it's worked for them or worked with different modifications. So, that's what we'll try to do to bring that back to you. Thank you.
So, Counselor Sinks, am I hearing that we no longer have a vote?
I believe you are.
Okay.
Because I don't think we have to vote on your time.
It sounds like the problem has been solved.
Yes, thank you all very much.
All right, so, no vote on that tonight. Thank you very much for bringing that forward. And we move on now to our next city council request, and for that, I will hand over the floor to Counselor Lowe.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is the second council request. This is regarding the proposal, a very draft amendment that is posted on Lakewood Speaks, the shorthand for which is, "Yes, in God's Backyard: Yigby Zoning Amendment Proposal." There's a one-page proposal on Lakewood Speaks that tries to summarize this. I also handed out a hard copy of it, so hopefully all of you have that in front of you. We can absolutely talk a little bit more about this. I'm going to submit that tonight at least, we kind of have, hopefully, a direct, easy route. We're not voting tonight whether this is a good idea. We're not voting on the text of this amendment. We're not, this is not a debate tonight, doesn't need to be a debate tonight, about the substantive whether this needs to go in the zoning code. All this is a formal vote on the record directing that staff, that council is interested enough in this idea, that we would like staff to formally work with me on preparing a final draft of this amendment that can be offered to the zoning code. We basically agreed on that at the last study session on zoning. We discussed this, the Yigby idea was one of about 10 or 15 or 20 ideas we talked about that night. The consensus was that I would move forward with this. I've done some more research. The same brilliant intern that I mentioned a moment ago has helped me do some research on this. We've talked already to staff about this. We've pulled together some information on this, and we have a more fleshed-out proposal. But we're not voting on this tonight. We're just, all I'm asking for tonight is that council signal formally that we're interested enough in this, that we would like staff to help me land the plane with a final amendment. To provide just a little bit more context, as we discussed in that study session, there was a state legislative proposal in the last session on Yigby. So, the basic thrust of this idea for those following along at home is that if a religious institution, which has a clearly defined definition in our zoning code, would like to build housing and is willing to set aside some of that housing to be deed-restricted affordable, we want to make it easy to do so. After looking at the way that the bill was drafted, to make a long story short, our recommendation to council and staff is that the simplest way to do that is to basically say that a religious institution can build mid-form residential regardless of the zoning designation, which I'll remind you, I mean, has quite a few restrictions. For instance, it can't be higher than 45 feet versus 35 feet in a low-form residential. So, this is not like a wildly denser form of housing. But the idea is that if a religious institution is willing to build housing and work with a partner to do that and is willing to deed-restrict 30% of the units, that they can do that. We've also added language, again, in this draft amendment, that makes very clear that this doesn't authorize university-college uses to be built where the current code does not permit it, which has already been discussed in some of the study sessions we've had, is important to a number of folks on council. We've taken, there's a provision here to make sure that the parking requirement doesn't go up as a result of this, and then we also have some language in here to make sure that we prevent discrimination based on religion or other criteria in the Fair Housing Act. So, that's the idea. So, A, I would love everyone to vote yes on this so that we can work with staff to finalize and flesh out a proposal. I am signaling tonight that I would like to offer a version of this amendment on second reading in the zoning code. I'm happy to take questions or get thoughts from members of council on the draft of the amendment while it's on the agenda and we have time to do this tonight. In case anyone's wondering why I brought this, the mayor suggested that it would be useful to get a formal vote on the record before staff spend more time on this. So, that's what I'm asking for tonight. I'll just, I guess I'll just, Reg Cox, the executive director of Lakewood Connects, sent a letter to council a couple of days ago. I thought he put it pretty well. "We are disappointed to see House Bill 1169, which would have authorized Yigby within certain parameters in Colorado, not enacted by the Colorado General Assembly. Now Lakewood has an exciting opportunity to lead Inspire. Let us show how faith leaders and community members can come together and collaborate to make affordable, attainable housing more available in our community." This idea is actually not my idea. It was proposed to me by a pastor in Lakewood. I have seen a number of, I've had many conversations with faith leaders in Lakewood over the last couple of months. I have seen folks get excited about this. I've learned about some other projects, affordable housing projects in Arvada, in Denver, that other religious institutions have been able to build, obviously not with, like, under Yigby, but projects that have created affordable housing. I'm hoping to get a chance to tour some of these because I've heard really good things about these projects and would be certainly happy to have other members of council see those, too. I think this is an exciting opportunity for Lakewood to lead by working with faith leaders, not just churches, synagogues, mosques, faith leaders across the board, to make more affordable, attainable housing available in our community. So, that's the idea. Would love your vote.
Second?
I guess I better make a formal motion. I move that we direct staff to work with me to finalize an amendment to be offered on second reading in the zoning ordinance.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I have a few hands up here. We'll go Mayor Protam Sharazai, Counselor I Cruz, and then Counselor Labure.
Yes, thank you. Excited to hear this come forward, was disappointed to see it fail at the state level, and understand and appreciate the sort of creative thinking we're applying. That being said, I happen to represent a part of Lakewood that has a continuous, you know, push-and-pull relationship with Colorado Christian University. And we did see in version one of the zoning code, there was language put in that was creating a path for more ability from the university to be able to build housing. We stripped that out. I appreciate my colleagues' support in that. My concern with this, and I think this is great and we should talk about it more, my concern is that when I look up CCU, they are listed as a religious institution. And so, I understand that there's a qualifier around universities and colleges, and I just want to make sure that this is, like, locktight because we have found ourselves in legal pursuits with them over many times over the years, and this is one of the biggest issues in Ward One. So, it would, to me, feel irresponsible, having done that work at the beginning of the zoning process, to then come in unless we can have some assurances, and I know that legal still hasn't had a chance to review this. I know there's a desire to put this in the second reading, and I just would love a little bit more time on that, and I wonder if there's a willingness to think about even a study session. I think we have one on August 7th where we can just dive in this a little bit deeper because for me, and Counselor Sinks and I, we've been meeting with community leaders, and the biggest thing we're hearing is about the process. And so, for an issue that And so for an issue that is one of the most top-of-mind for Ward 1 residents to potentially be able to wiggle through, because CCU has a high-paid legal team, and check their 990s, super healthy fund balance, so they have the means legally and the resources to be able to do this, and I happen to live on the street in which they are sort of encroaching on. So it's doubly personal for me. So I don't know if there, I know that there hasn't been a chance to quite look at everything. I guess I wonder if staff is, like, can we lock this in and make sure that there's a path to ensure that an entity like CCU isn't able to move forward?
Yes, if city council directs us, we can review this and send a response out to everybody about issues and concerns. We work at the direction of city council.
Did you have more? Counselor Isabel Cruz.
Thank you, and I want to shout out Counselor Lowe's diligence from bringing this from the conversation we had in our study session about this, where I think there, at least from what I remember, was a very clear consensus about moving this conversation forward into something that we can very clearly review and have a tangible conversation about it. And so I am very strongly supportive of dedicating whatever capacity is needed, although, I don't know, I can't speak, I can't speak for you all, but it does, to me, seem like there's a lot of groundwork done on this. This is not a new provision. This has been done in other states and other cities, and university use is an issue across the country, right, in these capacities? And so I think that there are mechanisms to deal with this that we can discuss, and I think are really important, because I do think, to the mayor pro tem's point, we need to respect, honor, and protect for those concerns in our community. And I also just wanted to note how much, I think, enthusiasm amongst the faith leaders we're connected with in the community there was around this House bill, and then also around feeling heard in this being moved forward in our zoning code process. And I think in the litany of things that we have decided to do this year, I think it would make sense to continue to incorporate this in our current process and not continue to drag it along. I think we did also just get, you know, the full zoning code update piece, and so I would hope that potentially that provides some opportunity for some of the stakeholding I know a lot of us are going to do now that that is out. And so I think, you know, the thoughtfulness around university uses and the pieces to come is important, the considerations around affordable housing and what that looks like, I think will make this really valuable in our community. And then just for one policy piece that I think would be important to explore is, I think that this does allow for upzoning, which I think is great. I would also be curious, since some religious land is in mixed-use areas in Lakewood, including in my ward, and there are going to be examples of some attempts to bring different kinds of affordable housing that is going to relate to, anyway, I think it, because the whole piece, right, about a relupa and about the ability to do with the land what they want. And so I think maybe thinking about it, the other capacity, if folks want to build, like, affordable, single-family or townhouse, like, things that might not be, anyway, just food for thought on that. And I'm excited for you, and thank you for your work on this so far.
Counselor Nystrom, then Counselor Matt Guerrero.
Thank you. I know, Roger, there's two things you're very passionate about, housing and parking. Okay? Understood. I get it. I don't have a problem with moving this forward, having staff work on it, investigate. I think it's too rushed. I think we need to vet this a little bit further, and I think we need to have some understanding of, like, the potential places this could go in, that there's residents that need to have a little time to digest this. But I guess I'm curious about the parking, where no parking will be increased in any instance. And if you read what it said in the Pasadena ordinance, they require one parking spot per unit unless you're by a transit area. And I think there's probably situations where there are religious organizations that are not located close to a bus stop. And if I'm wrong about that, great, fine, you know, but I do think that's a consideration. And if it's an affordable housing initiative and all of that, that's fantastic, but I guess, in reality, there's people in my ward that live in their cars. So they do have cars, some of them, right, that might be eligible for this housing. So like, let's not preclude parking in instances where it makes sense to have parking, right? Thank you.
Counselor Matt Guerrero.
I think that my co-counselor Cruz, I really got to almost every point.
Oh, no.
We'll come back to Counselor Matt Guerrero. I've got Counselor Sinks.
I think that...
Counselor Matt Guerrero, we lost you for a minute.
Can you hear me now?
We can, if you want to repeat what you said.
Yes, thank you so much for the grace with the internet. So I think that my co-counselor Cruz, I said everything I needed to, and especially given my unstable internet, apparently, I will be quick and just say I am definitely interested in this becoming a part of the zoning code. I think if we get to the point of amendment, and some of the questions about CCU, and some of the other questions that are being brought up aren't, we're not able to sufficiently answer, it's totally appropriate at that time to keep it separate and take more time. But I think our original intention around getting this within the zoning code was, I stand by it, and I am in favor of this.
Counselor Sinks.
Thank you. So if I understood you correctly, you want us to move this forward, that you can work with staff on drafting an ordinance. Do you have a timeframe on that, and does that timeframe fit with the staff's ability to work it in? I don't know if you've checked on that.
May I respond?
You can respond, yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Sinks. So to clarify, it's to direct staff to work with me to prepare an amendment in time for me to offer it on second reading. Under our current timeline, that would be, I believe, August 25th. Yes, I have talked to staff about this. I've talked to Mr. Parker about this. I have not had a chance to talk to the city attorney's office about this, and I recognize that our city attorney has a lot on their plate. And respectfully, I raised this idea at the earliest possible opportunity in the process, which was by sending it in as something that I wanted to look at in advance of our three study sessions. We got to it in the final study session, because that was the first time we had time to get to it. And I think this is important. I think it's important, I think a lot of faith leaders in Lakewood thinks it's important. So I think I'm asking council to direct staff to prioritize preparing an amendment. I think it's actually quite close. I have some other thoughts on that, and I'll respond to a couple of other comments, but I don't want to hog the mic in case other folks have input. So, yes, it's an amendment to the zoning code.
Thank you.
Counselor Ryan.
I also agree that this is an important topic, in that we should devote resources and time to review this, but I do believe that we do need to devote time and resources to it. Going back to the mayor pro tem's comment, I would be in favor of a study session to learn more. Why 30%, for example, instead of 20% or 40% or 100%? Does Pasadena allow mid-form in the areas that are currently zoned, single-family? Or do they allow duplexes, which is already currently proposed under this ordinance? So there's a number, and the parking issue that Counselor Nystrom raised, that would be another issue, you know, do we do parking, do we not do parking? I'd love to see how things have gone, and you probably already know the answers to, things may be going swimmingly well in Pasadena, and that's fantastic to know, but I'd really like to have someone from our staff be able to lay all this out for us. Why did it fail in the legislature? Was it just, you know, not "in my backyard" kind of mentality? Or were there some actual substantive policy reasons that we should consider and address, and make sure we build those guardrails around this? Right now, I see A, B, C, and then number five, you know, so I'm not really sure what to do with all of that in terms of what I'm looking at. And I know that's precisely your point, is I want to develop this out. We're already, or I'm already, dealing with a lot of feedback from my community saying, you know, the latest and greatest version of the zoning ordinance was just posted sometime this afternoon. It wasn't up this morning, it wasn't up early afternoon, it's posted sometime this afternoon, and then we're going to add a very different topic on top of that. And that's just feels like a lot for me to be able to talk to my community about without being able to provide them with answers to questions I don't even know what the questions are for me to ask yet, because I've not been fully informed on this topic. So my, I would prefer to have more study on this. I do think this is a very important topic, and it could be very interesting for Lakewood. I'm just not ready to just vote for, vote for with an amendment without being provided with more information from staff that's been fully vetted.
I have a couple more hands up here before we move on to the second round. I'll share my thoughts, and I am very excited to entertain this idea as a concept in general, but not comfortable in putting it into the zoning code because the timing. To Counselor Ryan's point, not knowing enough to even be able to stakehold at this point, and we are getting very close. I have worked, in my time in the community, over the last couple of months, trying to help bring everybody along to understand what are already some very big shifts in the zoning code. So I would prefer to see us move through in a way that, you know, what was proposed the study session, or even sending it to the HPC, once they're done with inclusionary zoning, which is very close. This could easily be a topic that they pick up and really dive into. So, love the idea. Thank you very much for bringing that forward. I'm just not comfortable with doing it in the zoning code because of the lack of time that it allows us to get really nitty-gritty on the details and the stakeholding portion. With that, we've got Counselor Sinks, then Counselor Nystrom, and then Counselor Isabel Cruz.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate Counselor Ryan's comment and the mayor's, and my question, so, yeah, August 11th is coming up, and then, of course, there might be a third reading. We've left the door open for that, and yet, what if we don't make the timeline? Because we've all been so engulfed in, you know, the revision of the zoning code, and so what happens if we don't meet even a third reading with this topic? Is that a fair question? Do you, did I explain that?
Let me clarify. Were you asking what happens if we need to go beyond a third reading?
No. What happens to an amendment such as this if it doesn't make it into third reading time? Or, you know, would we be able to amend the zoning code later, you know, in another couple of months?
Yes. Typically, how a zoning code is amended, not a rewrite, like you're currently doing, but how it's amended, is the city council would send a proposal to Planning Commission. The Planning Commission would review it, hold public hearings, and then send a recommendation to the city council. So that's the typical process. At this point, because you're doing a massive revision of the zoning code, all sorts of things are being worked into it.
Great. Thank you for that. I kind of put that out of my mind, that process, so thank you for delineating how that all works. Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Nystrom. It's time to go. Counselor Nystrom, I can't talk anymore, sorry.
Is it me? Is it me?
No, it's me.
Two things I just forgot to ask, if you could include in your research. I know deed restrictions were brought up to try to protect some properties here, based on the new zoning, and what I've seen about that is it's essentially worthless. I'm curious about what happens if a church closes or sells their property, what the impact will be in that instance. And, you know, because I know there's other communities, I have friends that live in another municipality, and they live right next door to a church. They were assured that that property was, and the church sold the property, and now they're building right on top of their neighborhood. So, you know, that's just something that I would like to understand better, what would happen if a church closes or, you know, decides they want to sell off the property, and there's housing built on it already. And then, yeah, I guess that's about it, but I would love to change the name. I'm so tired of nimby's and yigby's and, like...
We could call it something else, if you want.
Yeah, please see what you can come up with. Thank you.
Counselor Lowe, did you want, I've got your hand up, I'm sorry. And Counselor Isabel Cruz, you guys are the last hands.
Okay. Yeah, I think that I have maybe two slightly procedural points or concerns that are coming up for me in this conversation. Number one was, we, like, we came to a consensus as council to, like, allow Roger to move forward with this in our study session, and I know that that's not like a formal vote, and here we are at a formal vote, but like, that's how we've moved forward things before, and so if we're, if we're adjusting that, I just have a little bit of confusion about procedure. And I think, too, for what it's worth, we can bring amendments. I'm not saying that we should bring unvetted amendments, but, anyway, I think clearly this is a topic for debate. We have different opinions on it, but this conversation is perhaps flagging for me some procedural concerns that I'd maybe like to deal with later.
Counselor Lowe.
Okay. Love you all. I'm going to name that I'm a little frustrated, so I'm just going to try to put that in a parking lot. First of all, Counselor Cruz is exactly right. We did actually have a consensus that we would move forward with working on an amendment that could then be offered to the zoning code. And I have actually spent a considerable amount of time doing exactly that. Look, a lot of us have talked over the last year about making, you know, affordable, attainable housing available. From our research in the places that have done this, you know, in places like San Diego, Pasadena, and Atlanta, I want to emphasize, this is an exceptionally low-impact proposal in the cities that have done this, which, a number of which are much larger than Lakewood. What we've seen from the cities that have actually done this, from our research, is that one, two, three religious institutions at most in the entire city have done that. So it seems to me this is an exciting opportunity to pilot a model where we're actually setting aside deed-restricted affordable units. I mean, respectfully, Counselor Nystrom, always appreciate your thoughtful questions. I mean, a deed restriction, when you deed-restrict a unit, that's binding, that carries with the property. Even if the church sells it, the property can't, I mean, it is a legitimate question about what happens if the church goes extinct, but the housing survives, and the deed restriction survives with it. So there's a deed-restricted model for affordable housing. Look, we're all busy. Staff is busy. We've got a lot going on here. There are, what I have noticed in my 19, 20 months on council is, it's hard to push forward proactive legislation. We've been told for a year and a half that the zoning code is the place, is our opportunity to do important things on affordable housing. And I want to name, I mean, I, our staff has worked very hard on the zoning code draft, and I am enthusiastic about so much in it. And the last thing I want to do is complicate or derail that process. So I totally respect legitimacy of those concerns. And it's a complicated process with many moving parts. But we have been told repeatedly by our staff, by our leadership, by our mayor, by our mayor pro tem, by our city manager, by our planning director, that the zoning code is the right place for counselors to bring forward substantive ideas. Now, I... Now, I have brought forward this idea at the earliest opportunity. I sent it to everyone before the first three study sessions on the zoning code, and we had a discussion about it, and Counselor Cruz is correct. We had a consensus that we were going to work with staff to move forward an amendment. And this does bring up a chicken or the egg, a bit of a chicken and egg problem with this entire process. A number of folks have raised very legitimate questions, and we've done as much work as we possibly can within reason, given that, you know, a lot of us have two jobs, to get this amendment ready. But in order to get this truly shovel-ready, I need to be able to sit down with our city attorney's office and with our planning staff and work through some of these concerns. The Mayor Protem raises, and I've talked to the Mayor Protem about this, this issue of CCU is a totally legitimate concern. My understanding is the language we have here, "Nothing in this provision shall be construed as authorizing university college uses to be built where the current code does not permit it," simply takes the existing language in the code and ensures that it extends through to the yigby provision. But I understand that the Mayor Protem has some questions about that. And so what I want to do is have a conversation with our city attorney and the relevant staff where I sit down, and I hope the Mayor Protem will join me in that conversation, where we can look together at the language in this amendment and get it to a place where the Mayor Protem, and also Counselor Sinks, who I know the CCU issue is important to her too, are comfortable with it. I said at the outset, I mean, I have found this process helpful because it's sort of surfaced the questions that everyone has on this, right? We can, everyone obviously has the right to vote no on the amendment when I bring it, right? And frankly, if, I'm certainly open to having further conversations with everyone. If the sense is that it's just not ready, there needs to be more stakeholding, there needs to be more due diligence, I'm absolutely open down the road to just pulling the amendment entirely from second reading. What I have noticed, though, is that, like, you kind, having like a legislative deadline really helps us get our ducks in a row. I would really, really like to work to draft an amendment for the zoning code. And, you know, we still have five weeks before second reading. The zoning process has spanned from March to the end of August. We're very likely, as my understanding, to do a third reading that will push us into September. So there will be quite a bit of time for people to look at the amendment. The amendment will be circulated ahead of time. There will be time for stakeholding. But I would really like to get to a place where we can, we can work through these questions that everyone has raised, and we can have a final draft of the amendment. At that point, if people don't feel like it's premature or rushed, or there's too much going on in the zoning code, I'm absolutely open to that feedback, and I'm certainly open to then punting and sort of having it come back as an ordinance later in the process. My worry is if we pull this down now, I've seen this tape before. I could, I will not be surprised if it takes us a year to get this back on the agenda, just given how these things go, if we're lucky. So I would really like to use the fact that we're voting on the zoning code that we've been talking about for a year and a half to get this thing ready. Just on a couple of other points that were brought up, Counselor Cruz brought up the mixed-use question. Just, it's a, just to be very clear, the idea here is to allow mid-form for housing projects on religious institution land, but it doesn't prohibit someone in a higher-density area from doing mixed, you know, if they're already, if it's already zoned for mixed-use, they can already do mixed-use. On the parking question, thanks for the question on that, Counselor Nystrom. The idea here, as envisioned in this text, obviously, they're still free to build more parking. It's just that they don't have to, right? That's the distinction. But again, that's just the way this is drafted, right? Let's have a conversation about it. That's exactly, these sorts of questions are exactly why I'd like to vote tonight. Want to work with staff on, like, the right way to draft this. If the thought is that we want to go to language more like in Pasadena, which honestly, I wasn't aware that Pasadena had a different parking minimum standard, but that's exactly, I wasn't. I'm sorry. I, like, I said very clearly, this is a draft amendment. We need to do more work. I was very transparent about that. If it's better to draft it in a different way, and if that's an important thing, and you'd be more inclined to support it if we made that change, I'm certainly open to that So I think those are a couple of the things that came up for me. I would ask council to vote yes on this request for council action. Let's get the amendment ready. Folks have raised good questions. Counselor Ryan, I will certainly talk to you more about sort of where this is in the process. The final point I would just, I would just raise again, I mean, you've heard from 10, 11 folks on Lakewood Speaks who talked about this. There are actually a number of faith leaders in Lakewood who are enthusiastic about this idea. I, to me, this is an exciting opportunity to bring a number of faith leaders in our community along in support of moving forward on our affordable, attainable housing goals. And again, and I guess I would also pitch this to everyone as like a chance to pilot at a micro level, sort of what inclusionary zoning could look like as HPC works on a broader inclusionary zoning ordinance. Counselor Kay Cruz, we didn't speak tonight, but he made a very thoughtful suggestion that maybe we should add a provision to the amendment requiring a community meeting. Certainly open to that. So, I mean, there's a number of things that we could change on the amendment text. I just, I reject that we don't have the ability to, like, this council, and I know you all from talking to you all, we want to do important, meaningful things for the city. And the zoning code is one of those things. And I think the ability to make changes that make it even more pro-affordable housing is an important thing. And I don't think that we should just accept that, like, any substantive major amendment to the zoning code is just going to make the process too complicated. But if folks don't feel like it's ready, I'm very open to the feedback that I shouldn't bring the amendment. And if the votes aren't there for the amendment, then it won't pass. So you don't have to decide whether you like this idea tonight. Just let's solve the chicken and egg problem. Let me work more with staff to flesh this out, bring it back. I will certainly work with the Mayor Protem on the CCU issue. If you're not satisfied with it, you, the Mayor Protem has, I've never seen the Mayor Protem have a problem making a very clear, forceful case for why something should or should not happen if she has a concern. And I'm sure that she will, she will make that be known at the second reading if it's not drafted in a way that addresses the concern. And same for everyone else. I've gone on too long, but this is what we decided at the study session. We've done a lot of work on it. Let's, let's use the fact that we're working on zoning to draft an amendment, vote yes on this request for council action. Let's work with staff on this. And if it's not ready in second reading, we'll punt it, and we'll do, we'll do a process later. But I would really like to do that rather than just say we're going to punt the process entirely until, no pun intended, God knows when.
Did you have a response, Counselor Nystrom?
I appreciate your passion. I really do. But I am concerned that, yes, the new zoning, the revised zoning version, whatever it is, was just posted today. I do anticipate that's going to, there are going to be additional requests, questions asked of staff, and, you know, I just think they have too much going on right now. And I think we can make this a priority, and we can dig into it more, but I, you know, I don't know that they're going to sit here and be honest about it, but I don't think the capacity is there on the staff. And if I'm wrong, fine, tell me to shut up, but that's my only concern. Like, I get where you're coming from, and I understand. I also have a meeting set up with a church leader for next week, and there is excitement about this. But again, between staff capacity and making the community aware of this, in all fairness, I just think we're pushing too hard, but that's my two cents.
Counselor LaBure, then Counselor, or Mayor Protem Sharazade, then Counselor Ryan.
Thanks, Mayor. I was just going to agree with Counselor Lo. You know, I don't know that I support the amendment overall. I'm not sure. I really haven't had a whole lot of time to think about it. I am excited that Pastor James reached out to me, and I love his enthusiasm. I think he's a great leader, you know, here in Lakewood. And I look forward to sitting down with coffee with him to talk about this and look forward to chatting with you more about it. But I do agree that, you know, I think this thing should be given an opportunity to be an amendment and an opportunity to be voted on and have people weigh in and make suggestions and amendments. And I hopefully look forward to having that discussion later on with you. So I would support this. Thanks.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
If it did make sense, I'm saying, I would, I would support moving this forward. I don't know if I would support the amendment ultimately, once it comes up for a vote, but I support it today.
So supportive of the vote tonight?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you. No one is arguing. This is, this is something we're all interested in. I think you're hearing that pretty consistently. I'll just go on record, I did not commit to that. I was a no vote at the workshop because I felt that we would be exactly where we are right now, where unless we were willing to move this really into the zoning ordinance process, then there would be some thoughts that it was like a delay tactic. And so I was trying to avoid that from the beginning. That being said, open, similar to what Counselor LaBure just articulated, like, happy to continue to have you work on this and be supportive of that with, you know, like, serious hesitations for the reasons that I already articulated. And I, again, I would just offer, like, the August 4th study session does allow us, before we even get into this process, to dig a little bit deeper. Because I think there is an eagerness and a willingness from folks up here to talk, to move this forward, but we are, I'll speak for myself, we are getting a lot of pushback and word one about the, what this process is look like. And I've heard from some of you, will there be satisfaction ever? Maybe not. But I do think that this is, this would be a surprise. There is a 16-page draft amendment that I know folks are working off of, and so that is a big change for them. And all I'm asking for is would there be a consideration at the August 4th meeting, if the calendar is allowing for, and it looks like it is, like, could we just spend a little bit more time talking on that? And that doesn't necessarily derail your process to be able to bring it to the second reading as you're proposing tonight, but I wasn't, I would love to just have a little bit more time to get some of the questions that we have up here tonight sort of talked through.
Would you like to respond?
I am always happy to talk more about yigby with you all. Name the place, name the time. No, I mean, what is happening? I don't have the calendar in front of me. What is happening? What's the August 4th study session currently? Calendar does?
Right now, we only have establishing certain development fees for August 4th. So there is, there is capacity for another conversation. That's August 4th. And we also have capacity at August 18th, which is another study session. So both of those, August 4th and the 18th. Second reading, just to be clear, second reading of the zoning ordinance is August 25th.
Sure, if, I mean, if one of the things I'm hearing from colleagues is that having another, I mean, I am, I am honestly recalling a little bit Counselor Cruz's comment that we are plasma, like, we've talked, we've had a number of study sessions on the zoning So I'm only thinking through, like, what that discussion is actually going to be. I mean, I guess it'll be a chance to, like, come, I mean, will, the idea was to sort of work with staff to sort of work through the, comb through and get this language as ready as possible for an amendment. So in some ways, this adds a little bit more pressure because now staff has to be ready to have a discussion about this language at a study session, either August 4th or August 18th, right? I'm just sort of naming that. But, I don't know. Mayor, I wonder what you think about having time to talk about this on the study session versus not. I would defer to you on this.
My preference is to talk and learn more.
Okay.
But I'm just one vote up here, so.
Okay. No, that's, yeah, I mean, if folks feel like that would be constructive and useful, I'd be happy to, you know, get ready to talk more about this with you all at a study session on August 4th and August 18th, and follow up and share some more information. I mean, I'd...
Just one, not both?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, please.
We're plasma.
Plasma.
Counselor Ryan.
Yeah, and I'll confess, I'm not entirely sure what the purpose of what we were doing up here anyway, because you can bring an amendment anytime. You don't need our permission to bring the amendment. I don't think that's the issue. What came up in the study session is to kind of gauge our initial interest in this concept, if you will. And I think several of us, I know speaking for myself, said, "I need a lot more information before I can weigh in one way or another, and until I receive that information, I'm not going to be supportive." But if you want to provide that information and come to us with it, that's great. When you said, you know, you wanted to know tonight whether this is ready to move forward or do we, or is it not baked yet, quite fully yet, I'm thinking, "I need more information," for example. So, for example, the 30%, you mentioned the deed. A lot of, a lot of cities have found that deed restriction alone is not enough, you know, that somewhat, that they have found that sales have happened despite the deed restrictions. Title company didn't pay attention, whomever, whatever the reason. And so there have been other guardrails and other mechanisms that have been put in place, such as someone else controlling the underlying land to avoid having the deed-restricted property sold despite the restrictions on the property. Parking was raised, the institutions was raised. And then you also mentioned the idea of, do we roll this out across the entire city? Or do we say that this, let's try this in certain parts, to use your words, a pilot? I know it's a different context. But do we want to pilot this in some parts of the city and see how it goes? Or do we want to roll it all out into the entire city? I don't know the answers to these questions, and I could probably come up with 20 more questions that I just really don't even understand all of the concepts on. So that's why I'm so supportive of trying to send this to a study session, so that someone can lay out all of the, all of the issues here and say, "We think we understand how this will proceed, and we have a comfort level on that." If the, if you're asking us to vote tonight to proceed, and you're asking me my gauge, I'm not supportive at this point, not because I don't like the concept. I'm very supportive of the general notion, but I don't think this is fully baked yet.
Could I respond to that?
Counselor Lo, yep, your hand's up.
I find what I am a little frustrated by, and I know I'm not alone in this council, is we sometimes, in proactively trying to bring any kind of legislative proposal, fall into a trap. And here's how the trap goes. The trap is, this isn't baked out enough to add yet. And the answer to that is, yes, I want to work with staff to bake it more. And then we're told, staff is very busy, so staff can't work with you until they get an authorization to proceed. But this is that authorization. So I can't bake this more unless you vote to direct staff to work with me on the language. So please vote for this, for this request for council action, not necessarily because you think the proposal is fully baked, but because it isn't.
So is the thought that staff is not willing to work with you on developing the amendment language in any capacity without a formal vote? Is that, is that the thing? That staff's not, is not willing or able to unless they get direction from this council to go ahead and work with Counselor Lo on amended?
Yeah, if it's, if it's a big amount of work, absolutely. It takes six people. Imagine if all 11 of you each had separate initiatives that you directed staff to work on, and, but you didn't agree with each other. So when it's, when it's a substantial new article to the code, we would need six of you to be able to direct staff to do that. If we go with the August 4th study session, we're going to need to do this in haste because we'd like to post the information for the public to be able to have advance notice of the meeting. So I just talked to the city attorney, and we would need to have this work done, or our goal would be to have these conversations this week, so that it's, so, and she just said she's willing to do that if that's what the city council agrees to do. If you wait till the 18th, of course, that has impact on second reading of the code. That, that gives a little more time for this to be worked on. So it's really how you want to do this. But we could waive the 10-day advance notice, but that's typically our commitment to the community, to make sure people are aware of what's coming, and they have a chance to voice their opinion, or, or just silent consent, whatever.
So if I could, so then I do owe you an apology in the misunderstanding that staff is not willing to, or able to provide the time to help you with that amendment without our, without our approval. So that's my misunderstanding, and I owe you that apology for my, for my misunderstanding. I would still prefer, and for me to be able to get behind, get behind this ultimately, it is going to require a study session of some form. And whether you raise the amendment in the second reading or the third reading, you know, that's up to you in terms of your timing as to what that study session date looks like. So I, I apologize to you, but I, and I still want a study session. It would be my preference.
So Counselor Lo, what I would propose is a, with your acceptance, maybe we do a first vote of amendment only, as per what you brought forward, and a second vote of, we would like to have a study session. So as your Plan B, would you be willing to accept a study session?
Yes, of course. Look, can I, can I just, and I, I realize, I don't want to put Ms. McKinney Brown in any kind of difficult situation. Can I, can I just ask on, I mean, I realize how much you have on your plate. On a scale of 1 to 10, with 1 being no, no blood pressure whatsoever, and 10 being extremely high blood pressure, as you assess your, your team's workload, the idea of, of, you know, from my perspective, I mean, while this does need more review, I mean, we have provided your team with a draft amendment. We have some more issues to work through, but I'm hopeful this is not like a massively heavy lift. Can you just give council a sense on a scale of 1 to 10 of, like, how much heartburn working on this between now and the second reading gives you?
It, it gives me some heartburn. And the reason is because we're going to have to match the terms of the draft code into proposed YIBB language. For example, what is a religious institution? What are the guardrails on, on defining a religious institution? When you go back and look at what the state legislature did, they absolutely included not-for-profits and schools and, and a broad range of things and, and defined what a religious institution is. In our circumstances, religious institution is a very broad-based concept. And if, if this were to go through with our current definitions that's set forth in the code, I'm not sure what the guardrails are to prevent properties from being purchased and put in underneath a concept of, "We are a religious institution because we have a, as the state legislature said, a common understanding of, of a community belief." So there are concepts within the YIBB that have to be woven back into the zoning code, or we need to clean up and clarify some sections of the zoning code to support the idea of this YIBB. So it's not, it, it will take some time and effort. And we did finish our review of the zoning code, actually, late Friday and then again this morning. So I think as of this afternoon, we can dedicate time this week to do that. But, but I don't want to mislead anybody and think that this is a really simple thing. It, it's really a complex concept. And, and it deserves to be done in, in a, in a way that is not going to cause the community heartburn.
I'm going to, I'm, I guess I'm sort of reading the writing on the wall. Like, I, based on this conversation, I think I, I don't really see a way without, like, expending, like, a ton of political capital bluntly to get this through in second reading, which makes me very sad because I think this is like an opportunity to legitimately bring a lot of faith leaders along in support of this zoning code and do something important and useful. And it seems to me like the zoning code is right. But I think I'm reading the room, and I'm just like, I'm not, I, like, for, like, the irony is precisely because I don't think this is that high-impact a proposal, and because compared to some other things that are already in the zoning code that I think are, like, really, really important, I'm not willing to, like, inject more pressure and into the zoning code draft that I think is like a really, really important landmark thing that council needs to do, given the pushback I'm getting. Like, I guess I'm just not willing to, like, spend this amount of political capital over the next two months trying to round up six votes for this amendment. It sounds like people, there's a very strong sense that this needs more time. I really disagree with that. Like, I think there's been a lot of stakeholding done. I don't think this is a radical idea. Other cities have done it, other states have done it. The legislature wanted to do this statewide, across the entire state. There were a lot of people that really wanted the legislature to do that. My thought was that there was an exciting opportunity for Lakewood to lead by being the first city in Colorado to do it and to plant a flag in a way that would be useful. But given the pushback I'm getting, I'm just not willing to spend, like, all of my political capital on council pushing this idea, which I, precisely because I really believe what I said. It's like an incremental change, and especially given what we just heard from the city attorney, that she feels like the, the staff is, you know, we know how hardworking they are, and, and she feels like it's a heavier lift than I was led on. I'm a little frustrated around some of the communication around this precisely because I think Counselor Cruz is right, that we did have an understanding. I understand the mayor, Pro Tem, was not on board in the study session, but a majority of council was. And I kind of feel like there's been a shift tonight. That being said, if I stand down on this and we just say, okay, let's not try to jam this in for the second reading of the zoning code, I really would like to work on this and try to get this right over the next six, seven, like, not have it sit indefinitely. Can I, can I amend this to be a request for council action for staff to work with me to get something in, in, in shape and ready to sort of bring back by some reasonable deadline? And, and Ms. McKinney Brown, can I get your feedback on, like, what a reasonable deadline strikes you as, as you assess your team's workload?
If we could, if we could just have 30 days. We just now finished the zoning code, so it was not ignoring the YIBB idea. But if we could have 30 days moving forward to, to make sure that we're building something, that would be really helpful.
Okay. I mean, so I think we could still get it done by the, I mean, 30 days from now is August 14th, which is 11 days before second reading. So like, we could still do it. But I feel like the, the hesitation I'm reading on council goes well beyond, like, the, the city staff's capacity. I would settle for a request for council action at this point. And, and so I'm hearing people want a study session. So if we're not going to try to do it for the second reading, I'm sorry. But honestly, I thought this was going to be a pretty easy vote, based on my conversations with folks, and it turns out not to be. So it sounds like we, um, I, I think a smarter approach forward would be to direct staff to work with me on preparing an ordinance. I want to, I, I guess I would love a commitment from the mayor that, like, it will bring in, in order to, to bring that separately, right? Because if we're not doing it in the zoning code, that means working with staff to pass a separate ordinance and putting that on our agenda. So if we're not going to, if I'm not going to offer it as amendment, is the mayor comfortable with, with working with staff to prepare a draft ordinance as sort of an addendum that would come in front of council over the next year with more stakeholding, more due diligence, with the idea that it would be brought and put on the agenda by, I don't know, the first quarter of 2026?
So question, I question procedurally, really. Usually when we get to that point where we're working on an ordinance and we're picking maybe some of these numbers, like the amount of affordable set aside and that, it's either come through committee and/or it came by virtue of a conversation that occurred at a study session. So I, I mean, naturally, that's part of what happens is we get to the study session, we roll it all out on the table, we ask a million questions about it, and then we start to identify, okay, maybe here are the restrictions where we may not want it. Or here are the, the amount of affordable, not set aside, but I'm thinking of exclusionary zoning now. So, I mean, that would be natural the next step after the study session. I'm curious why we couldn't just move forward with it that way, like we typically do.
So you're saying a study session, and then what would be the next step after the study session?
We could potentially be ready to do an ordinance after we hash through some of these things in a study session. It just doesn't, I've, in my tenure, I've not had, we've not had a situation where a counselor is writing an ordinance. That is something that it comes from the group. We're picking and we're voting on the numbers that we like and that kind of thing. And then we move forward with the ordinance. So I would really encourage, and if you want the most buy-in possible, I really would suggest that we do the study session, and let's figure out what, where everyone's heartburn exists and, and within that, what might be workable for the ordinance.
Okay, so it seems like the, we wrote in the question of, should I, should we just ask for, I'm getting signals that at least a couple of counselors think I should just call the question on a vote anyway to sort of prepare for, for an amendment draft. But it, the problem is if, since staff has clear, since several have clearly signaled they want a study session, I just don't see any scenario where we're going to have a study session in August and then turn around feedback and conversation from that in time to, to offer an amendment to second reading. So I, I, I think, I think at this point, it makes more sense to secure the study session on YIBB in August, push for that. I guess I'd like to work with staff on, like, a more fleshed-out version of this. Maybe that's the way to do it. Work with, use the fact, why don't we push for a study session in August on one of the two dates that's been proposed? Ask the city attorney to work with me on a, a more fleshed-out version of this proposal with more due diligence that can be ready by the study session. The study session will at least provide a deadline to sort of make some more progress on that. It sounds like that's doable for staff. But without the intense pressure of trying to get this ready for second reading, I can live with that. And then at the study session, we can talk about the path forward on, on what it looks like. As long as we have, the, the one thing I don't want to hear is to be told in October or November, "Well, we just passed the zoning ordinance, so we can't possibly revisit the zoning code for another three years." As, as long as we, as long as we have an understanding that that's not going to be the line and the reason to not put this on the agenda, then I'm comfortable withdrawing and, and not, not trying to offer this as an amendment, doing the study session in August and doing that. But Mayor Strom, I take it I will not be told in, in 2026 that we can't reopen the zoning code for this, right?
Well, we add things to the zoning regularly when we're voting on new things. It just happens to be, right now, we're very cleanly rolling it all out.
Okay.
Changing a little bit of things. So, yeah, there's no reason that we can't add anything that is, say, of housing topic once it's done.
Okay, thank you. I, thanks for everyone's patience. I'm sorry this conversation took so long. I really genuinely thought this was actually going to be a fast, easy conversation that was then going to see up, tip up a more substantive conversation on second reading, given that we'd already socialized this on June 2nd, but that was not the case. So it was not a linear conversation. I feel comfortable where we landed. I would therefore withdraw my motion, and I would... You're not withdrawing your second.
Do you, are you done, Counselor Low?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Isabel Cruz.
Thank you. I think we did have a conversation at our retreat about, some of us try to be too nice to each other, and then we end up adding a bunch of stuff to the agenda. I think that's fine. To me, this seems like we are coming to a consensus that I don't totally know everybody is saying the same thing, and I don't think is fair. And so I, I think particularly because there are some motivated people that I want to be able to tell, "I wanted to move this forward," and have a clear understanding that all of us just stand in where we're coming from on this. I think we should take a vote on it. And if that doesn't pass, then let's talk about a study session. There was, there was clear support for a study session. And so I think this is a moment where we just need to challenge each other to have, we're having a hard conversation on the dais. Let's put it on the vote and see where we go from there.
That makes sense. I appreciate that point. Let's have a vote on my original motion, and I'd like a follow-up motion if that fails.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Maia Guerrero. Nothing else?
I was going to call a question.
Okay. All right, well, oh, Counselor Sinks.
That was, that was my point. I don't know if a study session has to be excluded. If you do all the work, you can present it to us at a study session. And we can learn from what, from your work at the study session. So we could add that to what we're voting on is, so, yeah, just give us clarity on what we're voting on.
Okay, thank you, everybody. So we would, the first vote would be whether or not to work on an amendment that would then come forward for second reading of the zoning code. And then we will vote separately.
To, to direct staff to work with me on an amendment?
Correct.
That we can then bring for second reading?
Then the second vote will be if, for council may want to instead start with a study session. So we'll go with the first vote. Again, this is opening it up so that we are having an amendment coming forward for second reading on this topic. So I will let everybody vote now, and please cast your vote. I'm sorry, you guys, I had to clear that out. Can you please vote again? All right, and that passes with eight yeses and three nos, the nos being Strom, Rhine, and Nystrom.
It sounds like I should also make a second motion about the study session in August, either way.
I think that would be good.
I move that we have a study session in August to consider further the implications of doing a YIBB amendment or ordinance.
Second.
Second.
Point of border, why?
Because I, I heard feedback from multiple members of council that they would like to have a study session to talk about this more, I guess.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and a second. Please cast your vote if you would like to have a study session on this topic. Are we picking a day?
Well, the city attorney said she needed 30 days to work this, so the, the study session would be August 18th.
Okay, and that passes 10 yeses and one no, the no being Maia Guerrero. All right, everybody. We made it through the agenda. We move now on to council reports, and this evening I will start at Ward 5.
I'll jump in. Thanks, Mayor. I don't have a whole lot to report, but do want to mention to the community, we're going to have a ward meeting next Saturday, and I'm going to be giving a riveting presentation on ozone and air quality. So look forward to that. I'm working on the PowerPoint now, so should be, should be very good. So I hope you, you'll all attend. And more information, of course, is on the city website. Also, want to just say, it's good to be back. Regular city council meeting, I feel like it's been a long time. So between, you know, CML and 4th of July. So it's good to be back, good to be back working up here. A few comments. I appreciate the friends of Jax coming to the city council meeting. You know, I've contemplated a lot recently because of the emails and the concerns about, you know, what, what things council could do that may or may be appropriate. But of course, I'm also really concerned about what we could do that would actually be effective in these kind of situations. And of course, it's an open-ended question. Obviously, a lot of cities have done a lot of different strategies as it relates to policing and, and oversight. And, you know, Boulder, for example, has a, a police oversight panel that reviews complaints and makes policy recommendations. And so there are, there are, you know, examples of what communities have done in certain kind of situations. And, but again, you know, I, I'm not sure, of course, what would deliver the results that anybody's looking for. And these are just touchy, touchy-tough issues. And, and so I don't have an answer for that, but I just wanted to comment on it because it's, obviously, a lot of people have a lot of concerns about things. And of course, I'm, I'm confident in our, our city manager and our police chief, and, you know, everybody's really taking a, a look at this, and they're concerned as well. And unfortunately, you know, I don't have a whole lot more to offer, but I won't at the moment. But just wanted to comment, I hear you all, and I know many of, all of us probably on council, I think, would say the same thing. And anyway, just thought I would share that. So I don't have a whole lot else to report, but I just wanted to mention those things, so thanks.
Ward 4.
No one trusts me.
All right, so, sorry, Mayor. You know, I, I echo a lot of the comments you, you just made, Counselor Bier, about, about Jax and all the folks that showed up and, and sent the emails, I think, helped focus some attention on making sure that the, that we all are paying attention to the, the issues. And I think it's going to help make sure that the city ultimately, and the police department ultimately, comes to a, a better result. And not necessarily that they were going to come to a bad result, but just to make sure that we're really staying on top of the issues and we're being hyper vigilant on making sure that we provide justice. The only other comment I have is that, you know, we've been begging, we've been having a lot of meetings. This is still the time to come on out to tell us about specifically what issues you have about the zoning code. We're having a Ward 4 meeting on July 22nd at the Lutheran Church of the Master on Jewel and Alameda at 7:00. That's a Tuesday, so it's a little different day than we typically would have our meetings. That's a Tuesday, so it's a little different day than we typically would have our meetings. And we, it's an open, it's an open agenda meeting, but what our hope is, is that you come out, don't care what word you're from, we've sent emails out to every community association that we can find that's registered with the city of Lakewood and in Ward 4 and those just kind of sort of abutting it. We want to hear your thoughts and this is a genuine call for you to come out and tell us what you like, if there's something that you think could be improved. If you just love it, tell us that you love it. But this is your time to come out because as you can hear, the vote's coming up pretty quickly here. And so without your feedback, we're not going to be able to provide your voice during these debates.
Counselor Furman, did you have a report?
Well, the, the only thing I guess I would add, obviously there's the ward meeting that Dave just mentioned. I also, I think two things are worth noting and one was alluded to by Counselor Bier, which is obviously we saw lots and lots of messages of concern around Jax. And so it's obviously a concern for the community, both in Lakewood and outside. The other thing I wanted to mention was I got a lot of messages, obviously, about the Google Fiber and so I'm trying to find out what, what other requirements are around notification. I know there's a lot of people who are concerned about that, but that was it. Thank you.
Ward 3.
A couple of quick things. Thanks again to everyone for your patience on waiting through a very extended discussion on Yigby. The Ward 3 breakfast is tomorrow morning at 8:30 a.m., sunrise, sunset. We've got Jenny Gritten from the city staff who just led the bike plan that we adopted is going to be giving an update on the bike plan and answering questions about that, including protected bike lanes and all sorts of other related such things. So encourage folks to come join me and Counselor Cruz for that. We hope to see you there. That's, that's in 10 hours. So if you, we will be there with bells on and we hope to see you. A reminder, as Counselor Ryan and others have already alluded to, that the zoning code draft is posted. The red line, there's a nice summary. Thank you, Counselor Cruz, for requesting that summary. I think it was very helpful. That's available on LakewoodTogether.org backslash zoning updates. So go ahead and check that out. I wanted to take one quick minute to mention something that hasn't come up. I just wanted to thank Kip Kolkmeier for his service to the Lakewood Planning Commission. He was an incredible chair. Some of you know, he ended up, long story that I won't try to get into, but he ended up being kind of displaced from Lakewood because there wasn't enough, there wasn't enough housing configurations that met what he and his family were looking at, which is actually pretty ironic and in some ways dramatizes the need for more housing configurations that work for a wider range of families. But Kip did a lot of, I think most of us on council know him, he did a lot of just tremendous work on the zoning code and a host of other issues as the chair of the planning commission. It was really unfortunate that he, that because he no longer lives in Lakewood, he had to step aside from the planning commission. And I just really wanted to thank Kip for quite a few years of incredible service to the commission and to the city. So thank you, Kip. We're going to miss you. And I also did just want to mention Jax Grotan. I really appreciated the folks who came out tonight. A couple of quick thoughts on that. Number one, I do want to thank the mayor for, you know, for politely but firmly holding the line on procedures. That's important. We need to be consistent about that. When we think about the sort of the structures we have in place as a society that protect all of us and especially marginalized people in our societies, the rule of law and our, you know, consistent application of our policies is actually really important. And I, I want to thank the mayor for enforcing that because, you know, we're only as strong as the laws we have in our, in our society and it's important. And that, that goes down to the fact that everyone gets three minutes. So I appreciated that. I also want to thank Chief Smith for his heartfelt and sincere statement. I thought that was constructive. I do think that this is a case that, like I understand the immense pain in our community around this. I do have confidence in our, in our exceptional police to pursue this case and follow it through diligently and seek justice for Jax. I think that's incredibly important and I do have confidence that they're going to prioritize that and take this case incredibly seriously, leave no stone unturned, and conduct this case forward. And having said all that, I do also think this case has surfaced areas where I hope that we as a city and as a council can look at improving our policies and procedures around how we communicate about, about transgender members of our, of our city, residents and victims. I think there are ways that that could be improved. I do think we need to figure out ways of making sure that folks are not deadnamed. That was brought up tonight and it's really important. I think there's more that we can be done there. I'm glad to hear the chief say that he's committed to getting more feedback from the community. There was an outpouring of folks, some from Lakewood, some from all over the region, that expressed concern about that, and I think we need to take it seriously. It was too bad the chief Smith wasn't here to listen to some of the comments because I think that would have been useful. I hope he will review those comments later and listen carefully to them and take, take that under advisement. I also hope that we'll be able to get some communication about, you know, the ways in which the city is responding to this and taking this investigation seriously out to the 50-plus people who wrote to us over the last week about this. I do want to thank the folks who came out tonight to talk about this. I think this is really important. It's a scary time to be a trans person in America. And the final thing I'll just say on that note is it's, it's a scary time to be in America. I am very worried about the, the passage of federal legislation that just happened a couple of weeks ago. I think it's going to have profound, profound devastating impacts nationwide, but I think it's also going to affect us here in Lakewood. I'm worried it's going to make a number of the problems that we're all working on significantly worse, including homelessness. And my five minutes are up, so I don't want to say more. I'm sure I'll have more thoughts on that at some point, but I just wanted to mention that as something that I'm deeply concerned about. Anyway, see folks at the Ward 3 breakfast tomorrow.
Counselor Cruz.
Yes. Well, you know, thank you to staff for putting together the summary. I know that that was something that was asked of, of our constituents, so that is appreciated. When it comes down to the continued conversation around the zoning code, I know me and a few other counselors up here are looking to do some roundtable discussions with constituents now that this fourth version is out. So please be on the lookout. I'll work with city staff to see if we can have that publicized. These roundtables are opportunities to, you know, listen, hear feedback, but also share ideas. So more information to come on that. And I got a head nod that will, yes, awesome. Thank you. You know, and I also just want to say what, you know, being a newer counselor and seeing all this lovely dialogue and governing, it's been a great thing to be a part of. I really, really appreciate the respect among all of us up here and with staff. That is something great to see and something that, you know, should always be the, the standard. And to the, the family and friends of Jax, you know, as an ally, thank you for being you and, and being visible. You know, I am committing to be a partner and making sure that, you know, there's transparency and engagement through this process. I do trust our city and I do trust our Lakewood Police Department, but I also am looking forward to partnering between both parties, you know, to see results. So that is, you know, look forward to seeing you at sunrise, sunset, early in the morning.
Ward 2.
I can't see if Counselor Cruz and I was already starting or not. Okay. Because I am virtual and I know it's, it's weird in the room, I'm like big and loud. So we'll, I will try to keep it relatively short. My one logistic is that we are having a meet and greet at 6:00 p.m. at the Ballmar Peak Distillery on Alameda and Sheridan, not the original one, more towards Greenmount Neighborhood, on Alameda and Sheridan on the Wednesday, the 23rd. So just over, like about a week and a half from now. And I, I also, of course, want to bring up Jax and the people that came to represent her and the fury that is within the community at this moment. And I think during our Pride proclamation, we talked about, or that night, I talked about that I was the first out member of the, of the LGBTQA community and now we have a bunch of us on the bench and that's really great representation, but that representation hopefully will end up meaning something in this kind of way. And while I, I do really, I think that the, the adjustments that were made on public statements were wise and I applaud the leadership that is being shown on being willing to learn and being willing to eat crow a little bit as needed is really great on, on behalf of our chief, on behalf of the city, and that's, and I, and I do really want to applaud that. But I also want to just recognize the amount of rage and fear that is happening in the trans community right now. And I don't totally know what that feels like as somebody who's like very straight, pasting and cis, and I just don't, I actually can't know what that must be feeling like right now. And I am not 100% sure on the ways that we will be able to be helpful. I think some of the possibilities of adjusting some of our policies and procedures over, over some time in terms of making sure that people are not deadnamed in this city is, is a great start. And I know that there's also been cries for additional types of oversight and the creation of a committee and the timing also has the potential to slow things down in a way that's not helpful for what folks really want, which is like energy and momentum and attention to this, to this matter. And so I, I think I don't have as clear of a point as I often do when I talk about big topics on the fly up here, but just that I've worked in rooms with a lot of folks that have been emailing me about this and I, I do, I do hope and, and continue to think that it's possible, that there's like room for improvement here and that we have a little bit of a moment to be able to do that. Whether or not that actually gets to happen as quickly as is necessary, I don't know. But the idea that we need to continue to be really seriously looking into the ways that we can make this system work frankly for some of our very most vulnerable community members is really critical. And I also want to just think about, I know that that, that those kinds of questions of how to fix this system that is like large and difficult and daunting is, can take a long time and it's really hard, but I also recognize that we did spend, I think 45 minutes talking about pickleballs today. And I don't actually need to like undermine that importance. It comes up a lot. I'm not saying that that means we don't talk about it, but when we think about this idea that we only have so much time and to Counselor Cruz's point months ago now that I think we've all mentioned occasionally is that plasma and the idea that there are these other big questions that could be taking up some of that air as well is really, just the dichotomy today, that juxtaposition really struck me in a way that it often does in this role. And so again, I don't know, I don't have exact answers yet, but I do promise to continue to work on them with you all on council as my colleagues and...
Uh-oh.
I know it feels sometimes like throwing yourself against the brick wall.
Good, good, yeah. I think we lost here a bit at the end, but it sounded like you were, you were concluding. So I believe it was a beautiful sentence. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Go ahead.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Echoing a lot of what my co-counselor said, excited for our meet and greet. I think we have had a lot of heavy ward meetings recently. We've had multiple ward meetings on zoning, multiple community meetings that we've attended have been on zoning. We are going to be meeting with neighborhood leaders who are interested individually and in groups too on zoning. So this is going to be a lot of zoning. I'm so excited. And we know that there's a lot of people in our community who don't, who don't know about zoning and so we've got to invite them in. And so I'm excited that we're going to do a meet and greet in addition to all of our wonderful stakeholding on zoning. So we hope to see you there. Additionally, I wanted to, yeah, also just speak to the, the family and friends of Jax. I think I don't take it lightly that they brought her and in to be here with us, that her, you know, final, her final place was here and clearly she has, is so deeply loved, so deeply cared for by so many people, some of whom I know personally. And her essence was to bring that light into the world and even after this tragedy, it is so clear that that is the spirit that's moving forward through all of this pain. And I think that that is just speaks so uniquely to her and to the solidarity that comes from some of these hard moments. And so I appreciate the community members who came here and who were vulnerable with us and shared their rage with us. And I am committed to continuing to be your accomplice in figuring out how to do this better because, and I deeply appreciate Chief Smith for apologizing because apologizing is not something that we see a lot of leaders do. And I think that that's really important and I do think that that deserves to be valued. And I think that there are specific concerns, particularly for our trans neighbors and their history with not necessarily our police department, although we did hear some public comment that named some of those concerns, but in general with police, right? We know Pride itself started as a riot that was caused by police violence against trans people, right? And so I think that it's important to stay grounded and that these fears are not coming from nowhere. And while I have been really heartened by the heart that I've been met with from staff and from the chief in this moment, I also think it's, it has shown ways that we, we need to grow and we need to continue leaning into that. And I think that that is going to require some external help and guidance. And so I, I really hope that in however the feedback process moves forward, that that is centered because I think that with the publicity that this case has duly gotten, that, that our trans neighbors are watching this and how this moves forward means a lot more than, than, just one case is horrible and I don't mean it that way. This like, this means, this has a broader implication than, than just the, the justice and attention that this case also so desperately needs and deserves, right? So I would be remiss if I didn't say that and appreciate everybody who has been writing into us about this.
Ward 1.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to reinforce some of the things that have been beautifully said by some of my co-counselors, but, you know, we know that there's uncertainty right now at a national level and particularly with LGBTQ, with our trans neighbors, they, I can't imagine the level of uncertainty and fear that, that's sort of operating. And we know that our local leadership is really important because we're wildly accessible and available to, to our community members. And so we recognize that as local leaders, we are on the front lines of protecting these shared values and building a future that we all want together. And I think that we've heard a number of times Jax being characterized by her community and many who knew her as bringing light into this world. And, and I hope that in this tragic situation, that we can stand up as leaders and ensure that she continues to impart light on this situation to ensure that we are doing better. And I do appreciate the efforts that came from city leadership today in recognizing harm was done and an apology. And also we know that there's still more work to be done. So I just wanted to name that. Appreciate everyone who came out. This is an opportunity for Lakewood to do better and I do feel confident in that commitment. And I have a bunch of other silly updates, but that feels dumb to say, so I'll be, I'm done after that.
So I'll say the dumb stuff. Yeah, to, I'll, I'll just say ditto to the, to what was said. Thank you for being so articulate to my colleagues. So the updates, we had no ward meeting this month because we typically have the first Saturday of the month and so, and typically July, we don't have a ward meeting. That said, oh my, we have like three, three days in a row. So tomorrow night, we're having a West Miller Heights Neighborhood Group meeting that surrounds the Westland Shopping Center. And so we'll be meeting with neighbors there, my co-mayor Pro Tim and I will be, will be there. And then of course, um... And then, of course, the West Colfax Community Association meeting at 7:30, that's always very, very informative. And then Thursday, there's another Ward One. We, we have a really busy Ward, so many things going on. Thursday is a meeting here at City Hall in the Community Resource Collaboration Room surrounding Lakewood Gulch, and many of the neighbors that live around that gulch will be meeting together on that. So even though there was no Ward meeting, it will be a very busy, very busy week meeting with neighborhood groups. And it's, it's a pleasure to work in this city, the city that really tries and is not perfect, but really tries. And we, we have a good heart in spite of the, maybe some missteps, but they are not meant to cause harm as unfortunately we see on a federal level. So I appreciate the staff, I appreciate the mayor and the mayor's response tonight, so thank you all.
Thank you, Counselor. Couple of quick announcements. It's, it has been a very long time since our last meeting, and it feels like a long time ago, but it was only maybe three weeks ago that I had the honor to accept the award for Lakewood getting into the All-America Hall of Fame. It was a little sad last year, a lot sad, when we didn't actually win the award last year, and what a surprise to hear that we are now inducted into the Hall of Fame. That comes with a huge shout out to our Sustainable Neighborhoods program. That is what got us there, and that has been, you know, hours upon hours of staff work, but also, very, very importantly, our Sustainable Neighborhood program is a grassroots opportunity for neighborhoods to really get together, roll up their sleeves as a community, and improve what they're doing for the sustainable topics, climate resiliency, all within their bone backyard. They get to pick the topics that they're doing. So it's a very customized program that the neighborhoods get to decide, and it's something that has become, that was born in Lakewood and has now become a national model. So congratulations to staff and to all of our neighbors in Lakewood that have been a part of this program over the years, and we very much look forward to continuing and even growing that so that we have more neighbors that are able to participate. Then the last announcement is Mayor's Inspiration Awards tomorrow is the last day. If it comes in this week, it may be a little flexible, but try to get it in tomorrow. Mayor's Inspirations Award is the opportunity for us to profile amazing work that's going on within our community, whether it be small businesses that are doing amazing things, actually Ballmer Peak Distillery, whatever the D-word is, is a small business here that previously was an award winner. We also have individuals that have done lifelong work within our city that has made meaningful, meaningful benefits to our residents and other organizations, nonprofits. I also mentioned, I'd like to highlight the youth section, that is one, we have amazing young people. One of the favorite things about this job is I get to see amazing, beautiful, and inspiring work almost every single day, and this Mayor's Inspiration Awards is the opportunity for us to be able to showcase all the good that is going on with our community. So if you know of anybody that is doing amazing things, you still have time, and stay tuned, it will be on the calendar in September to be celebrating all the good work that's being done. So before I close, I do have some words I would like to also say about Jax. It was an unspeakable tragic loss to occur in our community, and it really says a lot about her life to have heard from so many people here tonight and also in our inboxes over the last few days. Her legacy is important, and the investigation into her death is a meaningful part of that. I am so, so sorry for the pain, the frustration, and the sorrow being felt by all of the community members, family, and friends through this situation. Earlier tonight, you did hear an apology from Chief Smith on behalf of the Police Department with a commitment to collaborate and to do better as we move forward. As the mayor in the city where she was found, I want to reinforce that message. The city council that you see sitting up here is one that takes inclusivity into our community very seriously. It's something that I have the opportunity to see them working on probably every single day. So I would like to reinforce the commitment that chief set tonight, A, the apology, B, that we want to do better, and C, we are going to do better. So thank you to everybody who has showed up, sent your requests over email over the last few days, and then come in this evening to share your thoughts as well. With that, before I close this out, I know we do have a comment from the city manager.
Gosh, I hate to take from that. I just have a quick update. Several of you were at the Spring Forum up in Westminster, pardon me, related to the homelessness, and we talked about the county providing a tent, and you all decided that the city managers were going to solve this problem, at least as relates to the extreme weather, the severe weather situation for this upcoming season, because we all know the navigation center is planned to not be open for a good amount of that time. So this is just an update. I know we already received a message on Lakewood, Lakewood Speaks. The model we're going to follow is a really robust vouchering program for hotels and motels across the county. We have commitment from all of the other municipalities, even some of the tougher ones who, who expressed reluctance. We got a commitment from them just last week, so it'll be a shared cost, and it's the county's responsibility to find those rooms that can accommodate all of the need that's out there in the county. So that, that's a tall order, but they've committed to doing that. Our hope is not only do they use the hotels and motels in Lakewood, but in other facilities across the county. So I am giving you an update on the 28th, so I'll have more detail, but I wanted to say this publicly so people could hear that, that will be in the model for a whole host of reasons. The big tent is really off the table, and we can discuss that further, but it, so it'll be a pretty extensive motel vouchering program for this year. So with that, I'm done, and I also want to just express my appreciation for the folks who came out for Jax, a heartfelt appreciation, and also appreciate the work that the Lakewood Police Department will do and have committed to do to do better work in this regard. So, thank you, that's it.
Thank you. There being no more, no further business to come before the city council this evening, I adjourn us at 10:33.